Oh, she's talking to someone right there. Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to call to order the Ventura County Planning Commission. Ladies and gentlemen, if you please rise and face the American flag. Place your hands over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. The Secretary, please call the roll.
Commissioner Molitor.
President.
Commissioner Adukas.
Here.
Commissioner Westner.
President.
Commissioner Bartels.
Here.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Sure.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, before we go any further, make sure all of your cellphones are on silent or off, please. Thank you very much. And at this time, item number four on our agenda is the public comments section. This is a section available for anybody to speak on items not on the agenda. Okay. Just so you know, for a number of years, I've been, when I called up public comments, we've had exactly one person in the nearly fifteen years I've sat up here. And I've always asked for theme music. Well, I got it today. So, okay. All right, we'll move on to item number five, which is GP 06-003/ZN 06-0006/ST. Who comes up with these things? 06-0036, M&amp;M Development. And before we go to anything further, let me explain to some people not familiar with procedures here at the Planning Commission. What happens is staff speaks, gives us a presentation of what's in the packet and any additional information that may have been received prior since the packet was prepared. At that time, the Commission will query staff if they have any follow-up questions. At that point in time, the Chair will open up the public session for the public hearing. The applicant speaks first. Any supporters, cards for the applicant will speak afterward. Those that oppose will follow them. At then, the end, the applicant or its representative is allowed to close out the public hearing. At that time, the Commission can ask for additional questions, our comments of any of the parties or staff. Once the Commission closes the public hearing, it deliberates and makes its decision. So, that's how the order of things will go. And just so you know, ladies and gentlemen, public speakers, except for the applicant, are limited to three minutes. So, given today, we'll try to give you some latitude. If it gets to be a little redundant, we would appreciate you just come up and say ditto or whatever, just to, if you don't have anything new, we do want to hear what you have to say, but sometimes it does get a little repetitive for everyone. But again, we will listen to what you have to say. Okay, with that, I would like to turn this now over to Dan. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioner Chair, members of the Commission. I'm here to briefly summarize staff's analysis and recommendations on the M&amp;M Development Project. I will not repeat that series of numbers to spare everyone.
Thank you.
The project is located at 3945 Clubhouse Drive, which is within the Saticoy Country Club Existing Community. It's regionally accessible via State Route 118, Highway 126 from the north and 101 from the south. The project site has a land use and Saticoy Country Club Existing Community land use designation of commercial plan development that also serves as the zoning designation for the property as well. The project site is approximately 8.2 acres in size and is currently developed with the Cabrillo Racket Club, which includes a clubhouse, tennis courts, swimming pool, landscape features, a eucalyptus windrow. Surrounding development consists of the Saticoy Country Club Golf Course to the north with residencies along the golf course and agricultural uses to the east, south, and west of the Just to give you an idea of the existing development on-site and surrounding development, I've included a couple slides and presentation. This is a shot of the existing clubhouse from the parking lot. This is a view off the patio of the clubhouse, looking at some of the tennis courts that exist at the racket club. This is a shot of the swimming pool on-site and some of the accessory facilities around the swimming pool and the lawn area. This is a shot of agricultural to the east of the project site across Clubhouse Drive. You can see in the foreground flower crops and off in the distance are avocado orchards. This is a shot from Clubhouse Drive, looking towards the west property line of the project site. You can see the windrows, eucalyptus trees, and agricultural operations, which are located to the west of the project site. At the bottom of the slide is an existing drainage culvert, which runs along Clubhouse Drive. This is another shot, looking to the northwest, across the drainage culvert from Clubhouse Drive, at the agricultural operations. In the distance, you can see State Route 118. This is a shot, looking across Skywalker Drive, which is located along the north property line of the project site. You can see one of the holes of the existing golf course. To the right, in the slide, you can see an existing residence that's typical of that area. And finally, this is just another shot of a typical residence located up near the golf So, the project consists of three elements: a general plan amendment, a zone change, and a track map. The general plan amendment and zone change would change the commercial plan development designation of the property to residential land use and zoning designation of rural exclusive 40,000 square feet, minimum lot size. The project also includes a track map to subdivide the property into eight lots, which would vary between approximately 40,000 and 41,000 square feet in size. Obviously, in order to accommodate the developments, the Cabrillo Racket Club facilities would be demolished and that use would be discontinued. And in order to facilitate the residential development of the property, the applicants would need to conduct about 20,000 cubic yards of grading, remove six heritage-sized blue gum eucalyptus trees, construct private roads, install the utilities, and install an agricultural buffer, which I will briefly summarize, and representatives from the Agricultural Commissioner's Office, who will be speaking in a bit, will be able to elaborate on. In order to implement the general plan amendment, we need to revise a couple figures in the general plan goals, policies, and programs document. This is figure 3.23A from that document. And as you can see, the project site is right here. The existing commercial plan developments designation would change to RE40 to reflect the proposed request. I apologize for the blurriness of these diagrams. Sometimes PDF documents don't translate well, but all of these were included in your staff reports, so you can refer to them if need be. This is figure 3.23B of the goals, policies, and programs document. In order to implement the general plan amendment, you'd be deleting the only property which has a commercial industrial designation in the Saticoy Country Club Existing Community and then making the appropriate changes by adding a line item to the residential table and change the statistics to reflect what is proposed today. And once again, in regards to changes to the zoning designation, the project site would change from a CPD zoning designation to RE40,000 square feet. This is a terrible reproduction of the track map. Once again, these are included in your packets, so please refer to them if need be. This is Clubhouse Drive, Skywalker Drive. This is the existing property. The project would subdivide the property into eight lots. There'd be two streets constructed in order to provide for internal access to each of these lots. And pursuant to the Transportation Department's recommendations, there would be improvements done along Clubhouse Drive by providing sidewalks, guideers, in order to meet the county road So, as you saw in the staff reports, we prepared a mitigated negative declaration due to the identification of potentially significant impacts to three resource areas, the first being agricultural resources, the second being biological resources, and the third being a cumulatively significant impact to drainage or hydrology. However, we did identify mitigation measures to reduce these impacts to a less than significant level pursuant to the watershed protection district's recommendations. Prior to recordation of the track map, the applicants will be required to submit a drainage study to demonstrate that the project would not contribute a significant impact to cumulative impacts to the fairer drain and other facilities that are within the watershed protection district's jurisdiction off-site. We also have protection measures to ensure that there be no significant impacts to nesting bird species that might occupy the site during grading activities and construction activities, as well as monarch butterflies, eucalyptus, groves, cancerous roosting habitat, and we have measures to avoid that. And finally, as the Agricultural Commissioner's Office will discuss in detail, we have included a number of mitigation measures, as recommended by that office, to avoid land use incompatibility impacts due to the introduction of residencies near agricultural operations. It would include setbacks for residential buildings and structures along the south and west property lines of 70 feet along the south property line, 100 feet along the west property line. And within those setbacks, there would be a vegetative buffer constructed with fencing as well as, excuse me, and in addition to that, the project would require the creation of a homeowners association to distribute the right to farm ordinance to the future property owners of the lots. And yeah, so those are all mitigation measures for ag. And as you read in the staff report, there are a number of policies that apply to this project, everything from way of these policies, ensuring that the general plan amendment, zone change are processed concurrently, and there's internal consistency between the two designations that has been achieved. We have a number of conditions of approval, as recommended by the Environmental Health Division and the Watershed Protection District, in order to ensure that the septic systems meet code and also the applicants obtain either a permit or approval from the Los Angeles Regional Water Quality Control Board for the septic systems that be installed on-site. As discussed earlier, they need to submit a drainage plan to ensure that there be no cumulative impacts to drainage, and the project would be required to comply with the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System requirements. There are also conditions to ensure that dust generation is minimized, workers are not exposed to asbestos-containing materials, and there would be restrictions on days and hours of noise generating construction activities. We have conditions to ensure protection of cultural resources. Pursuant to the Transportation Department's recommendation, we have conditions to ensure that the project is constructed in accordance with the county road standards. Prior to recordation of the map, the applicants would have to provide water availability letters to the Environmental Health Division to ensure that water is available to serve the project site. Project would be required to comply with the landscape design guidelines and the recycling requirements of the Integrated Waste Management Division. We have protection measures for biological resources. The Public Works Agency has a number of conditions in order to ensure that future grading activities comply with the grading ordinance. The fire department has included recommendations to avoid creating a significant impact due to fire hazards, and the applicants would be required to pay the requisite Quimby fees for impacts to recreational resources. And finally, we have conditions of approval and mitigation measures in order to avoid land use incompatibilities with adjacent agriculture. As conditioned, we believe that the project does comply with all the ordinances that apply to the project. We do believe you can make the findings to approve the zone change. We also have mitigation measures to ensure compliance with the county's right to farm ordinance. The project complies with all the procedures for the track map and subdivision. And finally, as the project would remove six heritage-sized eucalyptus trees, we would be requiring the payment of the tree offset fee of a little over $30,000 to mitigate for the loss of those trees. There were a number of comments received on this project. The comments received on the M&amp;D were included in the M&amp;D, and they were all responded to in accordance with the sequel guidelines. The City of Oxnar provided comments. They're supportive of the project. They have no objections. Project sites within their area of interest, but not their sphere of influence. The Agricultural Policy Advisory Committee and Agricultural Commissioner's Office both reviewed the project. They, as will be discussed, had slightly conflicting recommendations on what is appropriate for the mitigation measures. And finally, we received a number of comments from the public, all of which have been included as part of the public record for your consideration. So, our recommendation to you on the actions you should take consists of the following. Bear with me, because this resolution's pretty lengthy due to all the entitlements and approvals that are required for the project. First, we ask that you certify that the Commission has read and considered the information contained in the M&amp;D and that it reflects the independent judgment of the county. Second, we are asking that you adopt a resolution which consists of the following components. First, the resolution should state, should recommend to the board that they certify that they have read and considered the information contained in the M&amp;D and any comments received and that it reflects the independent judgment of the county. Find that mitigation measures AR-6 and AR-7 were deleted and substituted with new mitigation measures, as shown in the M&amp;D, that are more effective in mitigating or avoiding potentially significant effects, and the new mitigation measures themselves will not cause any potentially significant effects to the environment. Find that the project might have potentially significant effect on the environment unless you adopt the mitigation measures, which are included in the conditions of approval and constitute the mitigation monitoring program, and that these mitigation measures will reduce the potentially significant effects to a less than significant level. Find out on the basis of the entire record that there is no substantial evidence that the project is revised, may have a significant effect on the environment, and finally, approve and adopt the M&amp;D that was included with the package that was sent to you. That includes the conditions of approval and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. And direct the Planning Director to file a notice of determination within five days with the county clerk of the board's decision on the project. In regards to the general plan amendment, the resolution should state that the board finds on the evidence provided in the staff report that was prepared for this hearing that the GPA is in the interest of public health, safety, and general welfare and good planning practice and is consistent with the Ventura County General Plan, and they should adopt a resolution approving the general plan amendment. The resolution should also direct the board to adopt the zone change findings, which were presented to you in your staff report, and that the zone change is in the interest of the public health, safety, and general welfare and good planning and zoning practice and it's consistent with the general plan and the zoning ordinance, and adopt an ordinance to effectuate the zone change. The resolution should also state that the board adopts the findings to approve the track map, subject to the adoption of the GPA and zone change. And finally, the resolution should designate the Planning Director and the Planning Division as the custodians of the record proceedings. Obviously, I summarized these, so for the record, these are not verbatim, the actions that should be taken and should be reflected in the record as part of the resolution. So, that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions.
Any questions to staff this time? Commissioner Norah.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I was, I wanted to ask a couple of questions that I realized that you say, well, we'll refer to them later, but I want to make sure that they get responded to. One thing was brought up regarding Quimby funds, and you responded, or the staff report responded that there are no plans for the county to use Quimby funds in order to take over this, which is the desire expressed in many letters. But it says that the applicant would be providing Quimby funds to offset this loss. Is that correct?
To clarify, the payment of the Quimby funds is pursuant to the Quimby fee ordinance, and it's designed to mitigate for the impacts to public recreational facilities as part of the Quimby ordinance and also the subdivision ordinance. The developers are required to either provide recreational facilities to mitigate for the increase in population and the resulting impacts on recreational facilities, or pay this fee, which is in lieu of providing those recreational facilities. So, by paying this fee as condition for the track map, they are offsetting the impacts that their contribution to public recreational facilities is causing, or the adverse impact is causing to public recreational facilities.
And just so it's clear in my mind, that is for the increased demand created by the new eight homes?
Correct.
Not the loss?
Correct.
Okay. So, what would the amount of those fees be for the increased demand of those eight homes? Do you have a figure?
I don't have the figure in front of me. That's per the ordinance, and the GSA Parks Division does that calculation and collects the requisite fee. I don't have the exact figure.
And the idea of that fee is to pay for facilities elsewhere. Do you have any idea where that land would be?
No. It's my understanding that the way that Quimby fee ordinance works is the county has general plans for, you know, new public recreational facilities within the county, and those fees go to those facilities. I don't know how specific they are in terms of identifying specific sites and types of facilities, but it does go to that fund. So, I don't know, for example, if there are new tennis facilities identified as being a priority in the Quimby fee ordinance, but it could be used for those purposes, but it's ultimately a question for the Parks Division as to what they'd be used for.
But the loss of these recreation facilities are exempt or not covered, or the Quimby Act doesn't pertain to the loss of these recreational?
It is my understanding that the Quimby fee ordinance does not apply to private recreational facilities. It only applies to public recreational facilities. I could be wrong, but that is my understanding of how the ordinance works.
The other thing that I wanted to ask early on is, obviously, you received this letter from Usik, Peeler, and Garrett. They are the attorneys for the Butler family growers.
Correct.
And it seems that the setbacks are, they seem to be different, the ones that the staff report recommends and the ones that this letter says it needs to be twice what we have before us. Could you explain, you know, could you explain those issues raised in this letter?
Okay, I'll briefly explain how we came to that conclusion, but it's ultimately, it should be explained by the Agricultural Commissioner's Office, mainly because when I adopted this project and I started processing it, it was after the point at which the Ag Preserve Advisory Committee had reviewed it and given their recommendation. So, I didn't participate in any of the hearings that the AIPAC conducted. But yes, it's my understanding that AIPAC had one recommendation as to what the appropriate buffers are in order to protect agricultural resources. However, the Agricultural Commissioner's Office had a differing opinion about that. And pursuant to the initial study assessment guidelines, we rely upon the Agricultural Commissioner's Office's recommendations when adopting mitigation measures, so we went with Agricultural Commissioner's Office recommended buffers. So, but I don't want to speak too much beyond that, because I don't want to misrepresent what occurred at the AIPAC meeting, as I did not participate in them. But hopefully, Rita Graham will be able to answer that question or fully agree.
Okay, that's all I have at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Molitor?
Excuse me, just two fast questions. How many tennis courts are actually functioning now? It says something like seventeen, but when I saw the facility yesterday, it didn't look like there were seventeen courts. Do you know that, or should I wait for the?
Probably best if a representative from the club.
And following up on Commissioner Adukas' comment about the buffer, I was concerned why the recommendation wouldn't be 150 feet, but you mentioned that's the Agricultural Commission's report. But will the buffer be, whatever it is, will that be on the property of the developer or will that be on the farmer?
It'll be entirely on the project site, on the applicant's property. So, in other words, lots one through five would include the buffer area entirely on those lots.
Thank you.
Any other questions this time? Thank you very much.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
Commissioner Chair, if the Agricultural Commissioner's Office representative is going to speak next, she would like a slide put up on the screen to discuss this, so I just wanted to know, so I can prepare that for her.
I'm going to ask for a little direction of counsel here. Is the Agricultural Commissioner part of the staff presentation, or would that be public comment for the public hearing?
I think you could probably go either way on that. It's part of the county staff, so.
Okay, all right. All right, commissioners feel comfortable having the commissioner speak as part of the staff report? Okay, all right, then it's consensus that we'll, yeah.
Just to facilitate this, I know the gentleman in the box put up the slide for the next hearing. If you could please put up the first slide of the presentation I just made. That'd be terrific.
Rita Graham, Agricultural Land Use Planner with the Office of the Agricultural Commissioner. We are part of your staff. As you know, the Agricultural Commissioner's Office provides input to the environmental document for the projects that are subject to the California Environmental Quality Act. We also provide staffing to AIPAC, the Agricultural Policy Advisory Committee. AIPAC provides recommendations to the decision-makers, the Planning Director, the Planning Commission, the board, and even jurisdictions that are not county jurisdictions from time to time. And all of these are on policy matters affecting agriculture. AIPAC is open to pre-submital concepts as well as proposals that are filed projects. This proposal was seen by AIPAC as both a pre-submittal and a filed project during the time when AIPAC was completing its buffer policy in 2006. The draft buffer policy recommends a 300-foot distance between new non-farming uses and existing farmland, or a 100-foot distance with a vegetative barrier. The draft buffer policy also has a provision for exemptions on a case-by-case basis. AIPAC in May of 2006 recommended a reduced buffer for the pre-submittal. The date of the letter communicating that to planning was June 2nd, and I'm not sure if you have that in your packet. Some of the considerations in that first meeting were that the parcel is only eight acres in size. There is an existing barrier of dense trees. The tennis club is an existing non-farming interface. The existing tennis courts do not have extended setbacks. The existing tennis courts do not have extended setbacks. And the tennis club is the type of use that gathers groups of children where children may be dropped off for the day. And that is a type of interface that is the subject of most of the complaints against farmers, not residential users. When the concept became a filed project, the neighboring farm owner entered the picture and asked for a reconsideration of the pre-submental recommendation. By then, the buffer policy had been finalized. In fact, the buffer ordinance was in process at that time, which would have made buffers mandatory for projects filed after that point in time. Two additional AIPAC meetings were held concerning this project in September and November of 2006, and each time, AIPAC asked the parties to confer offline and try to come to an agreement on a buffer. When the farm property owner brought a lawyer to one of the AIPAC meetings, we knew that the whole topic of buffers, the policy process, the ordinance process, all of these had put a strain on the farmer and the applicant. And later, our office looked for ways to improve their experience and to improve the perception of the process. So that experience has had a positive aspect for us. Now, at the last meeting in March of 2007, AIPAC voted two to one to recommend the policy standard of 150-foot buffer with a vegetative barrier, and asked for a letter to planning that would explain why multiple meetings had been held and other items of context. The date of that letter is May 10. The next step was for the Agricultural Commissioner's staff to prepare an initial study. Our rules of procedure are the initial study assessment guidelines. That is another policy document. They state that on a case-by-case basis, dwellings within 300 feet of irrigated agriculture may be considered potentially significant to agricultural resources. And we did deem the project potentially significant for ag resources land use incompatibility. The next step is to propose mitigation measures. I handed you a copy of the waivers and deviations section from the unadopted buffer ordinance. Based on the criteria AIPAC used for the pre-submental, and that I mentioned to you a few minutes ago, and based on the project meeting two out of the four waiver criteria in the proposed buffer ordinance, our office proposed to reduce the buffer distance to 100 feet on the west side and 70 feet on the southerly side. Again, measured from the proposed structures to the property line. And these would be mitigation measures that would reduce the identified impacts to less than significant. The process at AIPAC was invaluable as part of the board's direction to continue finding the strengths and weaknesses of the buffer policy by working some of these cases. We can assure you that the environmental document meets the standard for adequacy. We also wanted to be careful that it did not create a mandatory 150-foot setback or 300-foot setback on all legally created small parcels. These types of parcels are desirable to multifamily farmworker housing developers, and we did not want to set a precedent here that they might not be able to meet. And I wanted to let you know that Susan Johnson, Chief Deputy Agricultural Commissioner, with a special expertise in pesticide use enforcement and issues of chemical drift, is here if you have any technical questions about the buffer recommendation. And those are my remarks. I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions? Commissioner Aduka?
Do you have the letter that I was referring to, the October 30th letter from Musick Peeler and Garrett?
I'm sorry, what was the date on that letter?
It's October 30th.
Yes, sir.
I do not. I know that these were posted online, but they were a little difficult to read in the format that they were posted. Are there specific issues that I can?
Well, it's a densely packed, two-page letter. And instead of working through it, what if she got a copy and then maybe I could ask after she's had a chance to review it?
Why don't we do that, young lady?
Thank you. And what I'm looking for is, you know, you having a chance to review that, maybe not, you know, on your feet like that. And then respond to it point by point.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you want to recess or just stay right here?
No, go ahead and have a seat, and then we'll conduct them.
Very good.
Just give me a signal when you think you're ready to.
Thanks very much.
Did the applicant receive a copy of what we just got? Did she? Okay, thank you. Make sure we've got their paperwork here. She has it stamped on there. Okay, anything else on the staff report? All right, hearing none. Disclosures from the Commissioners?
I visited the site yesterday.
No disclosure.
I went up to the site this weekend, this past week.
I viewed the site yesterday.
Okay. Having driven past that site for about 30 years, I'm fairly familiar with it since I come from Moore Park. Also, I met with the applicant and his representative about three weeks ago, and reviewed the track map that's in our packet. Other than that, I received no other information from the applicant that is not present in your packet.
I may further state that I talked with three or four members of the Cabrera Racquet Club when I visit the site, and they asked me questions, and I explained to them what the process is here.
Did you receive any other information other than what's present in your packet?
No.
Okay, thank you. Any other disclosures? All right, I have 18 cards for statement of interest that all the Commissioners will read. I will pass those along for the record. And at this time, I have, one, two, three, eleven speaker cards, including the applicant. And as I said, the applicant will be allowed to speak first, and then we will commence. Since I have nobody else in favor of the action, we will have all of those to follow. And what I'll do is I'll state the next speaker's name so that you can be prepared to follow. Okay, with that, the Chair will open up the public hearing, and the first speaker will, of course, will be the applicant or his representative. When you come up, please identify yourselves and your address for the record.
Commissioner Westner and fellow Commissioners, my name is David Moorhead of M&amp;M Development. I live at 66 Alviso Drive in Camarillo. M&amp;M Development is basically my brother and I's small development company. We have this and one other development currently in process in the county of Ventura. We have owned this property for a year and a half and have operated the tennis club during that period, have been through many meetings, many consultants, and things of that nature. I would like to address any questions that you have of me at this point, if you would like. However, I would like to come back up to the podium and possibly expand on any of the concerns that the other speakers are here to give.
As I said, you always have the last say, so you'll be afforded that opportunity at that time. Any questions, Mr. Moorhead? Commissioner Malter?
Just a fast question about parking. How do you plan to handle the parking for these residences?
The site plan itself has adequate parking along, well, I guess in the driveways and garages.
Do you anticipate any on-street parking, and would that affect the traffic going back and forth to the racquet, I mean, to the golf course?
It would not affect traffic going to the golf course at all because this development would be a turnoff of Clubhouse Drive, and any parking would take place on the street that we would create, along with the parking in the driveways of the eight homes.
Thank you. Commissioner Aduka?
Yes, there are several references in our packet from residents that say the land was sold in the first place to allow for recreational use and not for housing. I'd like you to answer that. And you've owned it for a year and a half, and the title was clear, and there's no liens, and there was no?
Covenant. Covenant, conditions, restrictions?
Restrictions on the use. Thank you.
You're welcome.
On the land?
There had been a, good question, by the way, there had been a previous restriction on the land that was put on at the time that it was converted from, I believe, then residential, as well as the property across the street of Clubhouse Drive. There's a small strip of residential. It was converted from, well, at that time, it wasn't converted, but it was sold to the developer to do a tennis club with a restriction that it remain a tennis club until 1996. That was part of the restrictions, and I think it was wise for that individual to negotiate that with the farming community and, or farming farmer, and vice versa, because it didn't predispose that it would always be a need for, or demand for enough tennis players to support the facility.
Any other questions of the applicant at this time? Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Dan Allen, followed by Jim Lloyd Butler. No, we'll see how it goes. Mr. Allen?
I think he wants to address a different subject.
Oh, okay, it has number one down, so, okay. I believe it's item six. I'll change that for you. Thank you. All right, then, Mr. Jim Lloyd Butler, followed by Brian Fiskalani.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission, I'm Jim Lloyd Butler.
Address, sir.
2317 West Los Angeles Avenue, Oxnard.
Thank you.
I've been managing the Lloyd Butler Ranch for 25 years. We grow lemons and avocados on part of the property, and we lease the strawberry and vegetable land to C&amp;E Farms. The Lloyd Butler family has owned the property for over 100 years, and we intend to continue with commercial agriculture for the foreseeable future. We have several neighbors who we have dealt with over the years, and we have always attempted to deal with our neighbors in a fair manner. However, we've never had to deal with an experienced home developer speculating that he could build eight or 14 houses adjacent to our property. Mr. Moorhead came to us, I believe it was about two years ago, telling us he planned to buy the Racquet Club. And I believe at that time, he planned to build 14 houses on the property. He asked us if we would provide water for his project, and I, we declined, especially thinking of what might happen if 14 houses or even eight houses were built there, and the horror stories we hear of farmers trying to live next to subdivisions. I told him, he said he planned to buy the property even if he could build only one house. Over the years, we've had minor complaints from the Racquet Club managers such as Dust, and our last seat has attempted to remedy the complaints. He acquired a water truck to water the roads, and complaints were significantly reduced. After hearing, no, I already mentioned that, at this point, I need to tell you that I respectfully disagree with statement number, statement on page 33 of the project inferring that residential use would be less human-intent than the Racquet Club. Under the present use, club members go to the club, play tennis or swim for a couple hours, and go home. Under residential use, we would have families there 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 52 weeks a year. The Agricultural Policy Advisory Committee voted in March of this year to require a 150-foot buffer on the developer's property with a vegetative barrier. I believe that the committee felt that in the interest of fairness, the buffer and the buffer barrier should not be the responsibility of the adjacent landowner. While we would like the property to remain a Racquet Club, we strongly request that if you find in favor of development that rather than the 70-foot buffer on one side and 100-foot buffer on the other side, as recommended by staff, we require the 150-foot buffer with a vegetative barrier on the developer's property, as recommended by the Agricultural Policy Advisory Committee. Thank you very much for the opportunity of speaking.
Any questions of Mr. Butler? Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Brian Fiskalani, followed by Laura McAvoy, or McAvoy?
Good morning. My name is Brian Fiskalani.
Address, sir?
2401 East Moon Avenue, Suite 31, Oxnard.
Okay, thank you.
I'm the tenant that farms the Lloyd Butler property. This property is directly adjacent to the proposed development. I also farm other properties located in the Oxnard plains. Some are located next to residential tracks, and some are located next to commercial sites. I'd like to make a couple of comments regarding the application for zone change. I have a letter here from Rita Graham to Ron Allen dated April 27th, and I'll be referencing some points of that letter. On page six of seven, the letter dated that I just mentioned, a statement is made that eight residential lots, with only five lots adjacent to farming, are less human-intensive than the existing Racquet Club. And I'm concerned when the Commissioners, the Agricultural Commissioner's Office writes something like this to the Planning Division. I believe it may give the Planning Commission the feeling that everything's okay with this project. All the Agricultural Commission's offices concerned about is setbacks to protect the home sites from chemical drift and farming, from farming operations. What the Planning Division needs to realize is there are other incompatible factors that need to be considered when we put houses up against prime agricultural land. We're a farming company. We make noise. We make noise from tractors. We make noise from wind machines that run at night for frost protection, noise from helicopters making pesticide applications, noise from bird bombs that we use to scare birds away from our fields. None of these activities make homeowners happy. Again, we are a farming company, and lots of bad smells come from agricultural lands. We apply pesticides and fungicides weekly, and they smell bad. How many calls has the Ag Commissioner's Office received because somebody smells something bad and they think they're being poisoned? Trespassing and theft are another issue that we continually deal with. We're continually making calls to the Sheriff's Department about trespassing and theft. It's as simple as a person from a nearby home walking into our fields and taking strawberries or other produce to a group of people taking farm equipment. Before I knew I was, before, when I knew I was going to speak before the Commission, I tried to get a report from Ventura County Sheriff's Department documenting the number of calls that we have regarding these issues, and they were unable to get it to me at this short notice, so I don't have that to present. Dust was mentioned. If we work the ground surrounding the Racquet Club two to three times a year, with our biggest push from June to September, the prevailing wind blows right over the Racquet Club, and it would, if it changed to housing, it's going to blow right over the houses. This has always been a major problem with the Racquet Club, and I can't see it going away with homes. On this same letter, on page 77, the Agricultural Commissioner talks about setbacks on the project and unplanted areas between the property line and the crop line. These unplanted areas need to be considered prime farmland and should not be used as an additional setback for this housing tract. Our crop cycles change from time to time, and we may put these open spaces into production. This property has changed from sod farming to vegetable crops, and most recently to strawberry production. At each of these changes in agricultural use, the farm roads and ditches have been moved At each of these changes in agricultural use, the farm roads and ditches have been moved, added, or removed. On page seven to seven, again, there's, there is mention of an existing vegetative screen located on the south side of the property that would be used as protective barrier. This vegetative barrier is located on the farmland and it also could be removed if we put this open space into production. I hope that you can see that this is much more complicated than just a chemical drift issue. Thank you.
Any questions of Brian? Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
Just, just one, the letter to which you were referring, do you have a copy of that?
Yes.
Could, could we get it submitted into the record?
If, if the, if you want to give it to us.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, Laura? And following her is Tim Warren.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Laura McAvoy, 40 Encino, Camarillo. I'm with Music Peeler and Garrett and I'm here on behalf of the Lloyd Butler family. I have the impression you're going to hear from many people involved in the tennis club and while we're certainly very sympathetic to their concerns, we're here to talk about the conditions on the setbacks primarily. We have agricultural use on three sides. We're primarily focused today on the south and the west, but the, I'm sorry, south and the west, but the other side across Clubhouse Drive is also of concern. We're trying to work along with the applicant here by focusing on where the main agricultural activity is today. I thank you for reading our correspondence and this is a very important issue of the agricultural impacts policy here. The fundamental policy is that there is to be a 300-foot setback on the applicant's property. There's an opportunity to mitigate that by having a vegetative barrier which takes it to 150-foot setback. Here, the conditions proposed by staff are less than half than that on one side and only two-thirds of it on another. And frankly, we don't see any real justification for not imposing the full policy standard here. The Lloyd Butler property, as you've heard from the farmer himself, is row crop property. It does not have orchards that are permanent barriers. The Lloyd Butlers want to have the opportunity to continue to farm all of their property. There is significant issues as Brian has very eloquently described. Our understanding is that the Ag Commissioner's Office has been solely focused on the issue of pesticide drift. This morning's reference to farmworker housing was the first we heard anything about that and frankly, I don't think anyone looking at this project would assume that this housing is going to supply any farmworker housing based on its description. We have issues, as you've heard, of dust, of noise, smells, theft, vandalism. This, as I commented in one letter, the pre-screening of this project was over six years ago, that was a long time ago, without really participation by the neighbors. The original processing by the Agricultural Policy Advisory Committee did not include any notice to the neighboring farmers. So that when they first then were told about this and appeared, the committee actually considered the input from the farmers and came to the conclusion that this should be the fully imposed policy of the 150-foot setback. We obviously respectfully disagree with the staff's proposals on this issue and we ask that out of an attitude of fairness to the Butlers, this should be a full policy application. Thank you very much.
Any questions, Laura? Commissioner Dukas?
I don't know where I read it. I can't find it right now, but you, is it your position that you were not properly noticed when these conditions were being discussed?
When the Agricultural Policy Advisory Committee started their work, there was no notice on this project. Eventually notice was provided and the Lloyd Butlers were able to make a full presentation. And when that occurred, then AIPAC's decision was the vote in favor of the full 150-foot setback. I believe you heard from Ms. Graham that they've now decided that it's a good policy to actually notify the neighboring farmers and that their policies have now been improved by that. And so we're asking that the decision and recommendation of the farmers be followed, not of staff.
Okay, and, and going back to that noticing issue, I noticed this, this letter that we have in our packet is dated October 30th. Is there another explanation for, for why so late? Why, why it's, it's?
Why, my letter's October 30th?
Yes.
I have a prior letter also in your packet. I don't have the date right in front of me. We, we put in a comment to you on the initial mitigated negative.
Okay.
And then this is our, the 30th was our letter on the staff report.
Okay, so it's a follow-up. Okay, I wanted to, I wanted to be sure that, that the adjacent property owner was noticed of this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Commissioner Dukas, just for clarification, their letter, their previous letter, October 5th, 2007, it's on page 177 of your packet.
Thank you.
Okay, before Mr. Warren comes up, Commissioner Dukas, did you want to hear from the Ag Commissioner again? If you could come up, since you had a chance to read the letter? And again, state your name.
Rita Graham, agricultural land use planner. And also the deputy, Chief Deputy Agricultural Commissioner does have some comments based on some of the aspects of the letter. Do you want to hear that now and then I can take process questions?
Well, the big thing is we are in the process of taking public testimony, but I, because of the attorney's letter in the packet, the commissioner wanted to have a response. We will certainly hear from her towards the end.
Okay, well, would you like to respond to the issues raised in, in that letter?
I'll take the process. The first point seems to be that there is reference that the applicant's decision to reduce the request from 14 units to eight was to accommodate the adverse agricultural impact concerns by reducing the density. The letter says, "I believe it is important to understand that these are not the facts. The applicant reduced the density to eight solely to accommodate his obligations to comply with the septic issues." We would not know all of the motives for that, so if it is also or primarily because of septic issues, we would grant that. It says the applicant has never dealt with the recommendation of AIPAC that the recommended setbacks to mitigate agricultural concerns should be a minimum of 150 feet from the applicant's property line. Assuming that the appropriate vegetative barrier was also imposed on the applicant's property, satisfaction of that recommendation would also further reduce the density to a more appropriate level. We think that that's one of the decisions that you will have to make. We have explained why we believe that the 70-foot and 100-foot mitigation measure satisfies the CECL requirement of a document that identifies an impact and provides a mitigation measure. You can decide whether you believe it is an adequate mitigation measure. We believe that it is. We provided earlier the reasons for that. The letter says that the attorney would expect the applicant to argue that the Board of Supervisors General Plan Amendment screening that occurred in 2001 should provide some grandfathering. In reality, that screening occurred over six years ago and was well before there was an extensive knowledge of the negative impacts on agricultural operations by development. First of all, it's my understanding that a general plan amendment screening confers no entitlements on an applicant. However, our office does take seriously whatever the board recommends with a screening. In this case, it was a permission to apply for a change from a commercial land use designation to a residential land use designation. At that time, the density that the board allowed for application was approximately half-acre size lots and now we are looking at an application with approximately one-acre The statement here is, "We also have found nothing to indicate that the client, as the adjoining owner, were ever notified of the pre-screening process." If that is the general plan amendment screening process, I have no knowledge of that. I would expect that, because that is a Board of Supervisors hearing, that that applicant, that neighbor would have been notified of the pre-screening process. If the statement refers to not having received AIPAC notice, direct AIPAC notice of the appearance of this applicant as a pre-submital concept at AIPAC. AIPAC entertains both pre-submittals and filed projects. The practice at AIPAC for pre-submital projects had been not to directly notify adjacent property owners because we did not have a filed project. We had a concept in front of us. Many times, people with concepts go away and they do not come back as filed projects. So the thought had been that there is no necessity to notify adjacent property owners. However, and I alluded to this before, after Mr. Lloyd Butler arrived and told us that he would like to have been a part of the pre-submital process, we did indeed change our process and we now provide direct notice to adjacent property owners even for pre-submital concepts that come to us. We don't wait for a filed project anymore, so we thank them for that. One of the nice things about AIPAC is that it receives concepts before they are filed projects, at the very beginning of the process. They often come in with lots of questions on all sides. They're messy. We do try to package them up to be neat, orderly, and easier for decision-making for you. But when we get them, that is not always the case. However, we do have, now have a process to bring adjacent property owners in with direct notice. They don't have to come down to our office and read the agenda that's posted. They don't have to come to the government center and read the agenda that's posted. The rest of the letter talks about the reasons for a 150-foot buffer versus the 70 feet or 100 feet that we recommended. And actually, I think that those are questions of a technical nature and that either now or when you're ready, the Chief Deputy Agricultural Commissioner is best qualified to answer some of those. Does that conclude your questions, Commissioner, on process?
I'm trying to think how to phrase this. During those meetings where you have all sides and questions and you're working it out and you're, you're trying to come to some common ground, is, is, is there one side or the other that you represent more in, in trying to represent the viewpoint and the interest of, of the different parties?
Yes, we are trying to represent the interest of the agricultural property owner and all agricultural property owners countywide, keeping in mind that whatever we recommend for one, we must recommend for others. One thing we try not to do-
Must you recommend for others or can you go by a case-by-case and, and find the best fit? Have enough flexibility so that you can find the best fit for, for each recommendation that you do make?
I don't think we should do that. In fact, that is why-
But do you, but do you have, but do you have that discretion? Do you have that, these, these policies, these recommendations, they're, they're more of a nature of, of a recommendation rather than this must be?
These are all recommendations. The buffer policy is just that, a policy. It has a provision for exceptions on a case-by-case basis.
Okay.
The initial study guidelines, which are my rules of procedure, are also guidelines and they also include statements about policy and ability to make those developments. AIPAC instructed both this applicant and the neighboring property owner, who was not in agreement with the buffer, to meet and confer privately twice and try to come back to AIPAC with an agreement between the two of them.
Okay.
Rather than have staff and AIPAC make that agreement for them. So, no, we don't want to make agreements for other people. We provide all of the information that we can to them. We recognize that we are in policy and that that policy will have effects on other similarly situated property owners.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Okay, thank, Mr. Warren, now it's your turn. I appreciate your patience, sir. And following him will be Don Jensen.
Thank you very much for your time.
Name and address, sir.
My name is Tim Warren and my address is 290 Newport Avenue in Ventura.
Thank you.
I also have a business. I'm a CPA in Camarillo. To answer your question, Mr. Multer, there were 17 courts, but only 10 are being used and that's due to lack of the previous owner not being a tennis player and not fixing up the facility. So, in the 70s and 80s, it was a very thriving club. But I'd like to point out a couple of things before I get into the history of Cabrillo Racket Club. It's a very unique site. You can't see it here, but there are some mountains behind it here and it blocks the wind. So when we have east wind, it's a good place to play tennis. When we have the west wind off the ocean, it's a good place, good place to play tennis. So it's a very unique property. And I can remember my dad explaining that to the original owners before it was built. I'm a little bit passionate, so excuse my, my voice, but I guess I'd like to explain a little bit about Cabrillo Racket Club. My dad taught me how to play there. It's a very family environment where you can have your kids run around. Now my daughter's playing tennis. I'd like for her to be able to do that out there too. When my dad finished his abilities of teaching me how to play tennis, Wayne Bryan taught me how to play tennis, who's a famous coach, world-renowned, and his sons are the number one doubles team in the world. Last four out of five years, and they're over in Parrish Plain right now. So I would say Cabrillo has a lot of history as far as tennis goes, probably second only to the Ojai Tennis Tournament in Ventura County. As far as tennis facilities go, there's a vast need for more courts as opposed to fewer courts. We have a lot of USTA teams in all different levels of tennis that are looking for courts. It's difficult for a team to have a court if you don't have a place to play. So what happens is each area or clubs try to play each other at different levels, but you need four or five courts at a facility to do that. And we have lost quite a few teams in the county because of that situation. So there is a dire need and also for tennis pros, teaching tennis clinics and keeping kids off the streets and healthy. They're always looking for a group of courts as opposed to one individual court on a site. You can't really run tennis clinics or teach the general public on one private type of court. I'd also like to say that the Quimby funds are, been used before for golf and equestrian and I think this site might be, and I'm sure this meeting is not focused on Quimby funds, but I'm sure it would be a very good idea to purchase a tennis facility on Quimby funds because I do, I do know a lot of tennis pros that would go out there and rent it from the county and run a nice rec- of tennis pros that would go out there and rent it from the county and run a nice recreational facility. And that's about all I have to say.
Thank you. Any... Commissioner Mulder?
How many members does the club have at this point? I know it's kind of gone down as the club seems to have deteriorated... I mean, the property seems to have deteriorated. The parking lot isn't there anymore. It's all gravel and there's cracks and-
Right. Yeah, the parking lot was ripped up for earthquake... What do you call that? Earthquake investigation. So, yeah, it's in quite disrepair. I don't know how many members are out there right now, but it has dropped. We used to have 400 to 500 members in its heyday, and I think we could bring that number back up. I don't know what it is now, but it's gone considerably down from that.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Don Jensen, followed by Brian Whitaker.
Hi, my name's Don Jensen.
Your address, please.
1672 Donlin Street in Ventura is my business.
Thank you.
I'm usually behind a project that's development, because I'm a civil engineer and land planner and been involved in this county for my whole life, doing projects very much like what Mr. Morehead is proposing for Cabrillo. My real problem is, I raise my family at Cabrillo, and it's truly a special place in the county. And how we've got to where we are right now is really disturbing, because it takes a facility that really has a social value that isn't evaluated today, and it puts a land value on it that's related to a commercial zone or a residential zone. And in this county, those numbers are huge. A recreational facility value for this site, you can't even, you know, can't get there and have it penciled economically for any owner. So, I think there is a lot of reason to consider this property as a community asset and try to find a way to buy it as either a county property. Or, one of the alternatives I would suggest be considered is leaving the core racquet club intact and maybe allowing two or three homes built around the perimeter that would still provide the buffer to the ag, but some core value returned back to the club with some good, solid policy decisions from the Planning Commission and the board to leave this as a recreational facility for the county. I think it's hard, because we work within a pretty stringent zoning code. It's hard, because we don't always think out of the box when we look at a piece of property and try to find the best use of it. I think it's hard, because it has been run down pretty much since 1997, when the sunset on the use as a tennis facility sunsetted. Mr. Carson's application to the, you know, relatively low-key application on a general plan screening to consider residential. County staff's idea that commercial zoning was the right zoning for the property, because it's what fit the matrix. All these reasons have kind of combined into where we are today. But where we are today is really going to change the property forever, so I really hope that we think about not just the track map or the zone change or the SEQA document, but really about the land use decision that goes behind it. So, that's my speech today.
No, thank you. Any questions of Mr. Jensen?
Thank you for appearing. Thank you.
Mr. Brian Whitaker, followed by... Oh, boy. Mary Beth Kaminski Power. I hope I said that right. Mr. Whitaker, name and address, sir?
Good morning. My name's Brian Whitaker. I live at 1856 Scott Avenue in Ventura. There's probably other people here can talk more about the history of Cabrillo Racquet Club and how they've, like me, have raised their family there and how their kids have went on to be active in the high school tennis teams and such like that around the county, as well as the ones that have went on to become professionals. I guess the one thing I think I can possibly bring unique to this discussion is that it's been mentioned that the parking lot is tore up. And one of the many maintenance issues that have occurred over the last several years is, as the property was last being sold, the owners decided to construct a very large excavation, which virtually destroyed the parking lot. At that point, as many people have mentioned, it's right adjacent to the golf course, and it became very obvious that as... Every evening, as the irrigation occurred on the golf course, that excavation filled up with water. And which is also evidenced by the fact that many of the courts on the... at the tennis club have puddling of water that continues several days after a rain. Many of you know that just a few miles from here down in El Rio, the county has just spent millions of dollars installing sewers. The site... One thing that hasn't been mentioned is this site is only about a mile away from the groundwater replenishment basins for United Water Conservation District. My understanding is the current septic system at the club is so restricted that they can't even add a dishwasher. Now, we're talking about adding eight septic systems for homes large enough to occupy a one-acre site. I have not reviewed the details of the design of the septic systems proposed, but I am a registered professional civil engineer, involved in water projects in Ventura County for over 25 years. To me, the evidence that you see there of the water that's being used for irrigation upstream, up gradient of this, that's being flushed down through the groundwater barrier, groundwater area, into the exact area that's being trying to... The county is spending millions of dollars to protect by installation of sewers for collection and treatment elsewhere, seems to not match up to me. How can that possibly be a good thing to do in this area to add additional wastewater facilities in this area here, so close to precious groundwater resources? So, I guess that's what I would add and ask that you, you know... And just on top of the fact that, the last thing that this county needs, in my view, is eight more estate-sized lots. What we really need is recreation for those residents that already live here. And some people have mentioned that there's a lack of courts, and that's a difficult thing to prove, but I can tell you right now that the current courts here in the city of Ventura are used for leagues as early as 10 o'clock on Sunday morning, because that's the only time they can get it. People obviously would rather pay in the afternoon or when they're not interfering with people's church activities and such like that. But it's gotten to the point now that you can't get a court to play leagues, organize leagues, except on Sunday morning. So, thank you for your consideration.
Any questions of Brian? Brian, we have one.
Were you able to review the mitigated negative declaration for this project and look at that surface water quality? Well, this is surface water quantity.
I believe that the surface water quality... I did look through it. I haven't read it in detail. But I believe that the owner, and at a meeting that the owner had with the members of the club, he described that they have made provisions for securing water rights so that the potable water needs of the community of the new homes would be met. What I haven't seen, and my understanding, there's just been cursory mentions of compliance with Regional Water Quality Control Board guidance and in a very general way, but I have not seen, and I don't think that there was available, a detailed geological report of what the mitigation of groundwater is from this site. To me, there's a natural hydraulic force because of the irrigation that's directly uphill. I mean, the golf course basically sits up the knoll there, and the fact that that excavation filled with water every night during dry weather tells me that there's significant hydraulic force that's going to flush out whatever septic systems that are there, if they can get percolation, that it would be carrying that directly towards the groundwater replenishment district's basins and the El Rio area that's been of such concern in recent years.
Have you made these comments in writing to participate?
Yes. I submitted written comments by the public deadline, and one of the paragraphs and the points I made was regarding groundwater.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Mary Beth Kaminski Power, followed by, I believe it's Stan Capelli.
My name is Mary Beth Kaminski Power. I live at 123 South Ventura Avenue, Apartment 5 Ventura.
Thank you.
I'm here today to voice my opposition to losing more recreation heritage and threats to farmland and overdevelopment, which would happen if you, like many others, kneel at the feet of developers. The state of the state at present is not pretty. We have a limited water and a drought. We have a 10-month supply of houses for sale. We have new homes languishing. I have children who play tennis, either can't find courts within a reasonable distance or open when they want to play, or the courts are closed. We are all... Excuse me. We are all in a sorry state with our bodies not getting the required exercise we need to maintain our health. Hopefully, the trend is to get moving, and I oppose any more sacrificing our needs for the sake of someone making obscene profit. Let's not be like the disgusting followers of the policies that our nation's capital. Haven't we had enough of raping of our land for the benefit of the wealthy few? Do we care about our children and their recreation needs, or do we just have the new standard of recreation plopping our youth in front of video games? Thank you.
Any question, Mary Beth? Thank you. Stan?
Stan Higley.
Oh, okay. Thank you for that. Our next-to-last speaker is Lynn Gray, followed by our last speaker, Robert Kelly. And just for everybody's... What we'll do is, after Robert, we'll take a five- or 10-minute break.
Hello.
Good morning.
My name's Lynn Gray. I live at 3292 Coyote de Bessa in Camarillo.
Thank you.
I've been a member of Cabrillo for 15 years, and of course, our families enjoyed the experience. We have two kids that are not now playing tennis, but they have the skills they need, and we're hoping that someday they'll pick it up as adults and be fit. I think there's a couple of deficiencies in the environmental document. You guys have talked quite a bit about the farming, and I wanted to say something. As a tennis player, being on that property and living next to the farm, it's no small farm, and I think to give them an exemption to this full buffer doesn't make any sense to me. I drove back there on the road. It's a huge road. There's large trucks coming in and out, tractors coming in and out. It's not, you know, it's not like a... Like I said, it's not a small farm. The herbicides, the pesticides, the fertilizers. I also wanted to bring up the bees. There's also quite a bit of swarming of bees when you're playing tennis there at parts of the year. They talked about the wind coming in and whipping up the courts, and as a tennis member, we love our club. We just go home on those days. We don't have to live there, because we don't have houses there. The second thing I think is really deficient with the environmental document you guys have talked a little bit about, and that is Initial Study Guidelines, Section 30 with respect to recreational facilities. The purpose of that section is to ensure assessment of impacts to recreational facilities, including facilities and services related to providing recreation on a county-wide basis for the citizens of Ventura County. In that section, I think the Racquet Club is a specialized facility, and there's nothing in the environmental document that talks about the removal of the facility is a significant impact. And I think the removal of the facility for the county of Ventura is a significant impact. There are private tennis clubs operating in the county, and they are operating for a profit. One of them is Pier Ponte in Ventura. It has about 10 courts. There's also the Pacific Club in Thousand Oaks, and there's one in Westlake, the Westlake Tennis and Swim Club. And those are all operating at a profit. And the idea that the Cabrillo facility cannot operate as a profit, I think, is untrue. So, to me, this environmental document considered the nesting birds, and it considered the butterflies, but it really didn't consider the social issues, the habitat that's going to be lost to the tennis players. I also wanted to make a couple of comments about things that are in the staff report, about the parcel being the only property in the Saticoy Community, being zoned CPD. It was set up that way, I believe, because it's the only place that the tennis facility will fit. It allows the clubhouse with alcohol being served, and so that's why it's there. And I think it's a real fit for the community, because the Saticoy Country Club does not have tennis courts, and so having a facility with tennis close by really does make sense within the Saticoy Community. Another concern was voiced by the county staff, is that the inability of the current tennis facility to be economic because of the constraints of the septic system for commercial discharge. And so, that's why the tennis facility has a snack bar, but not necessarily a restaurant or some of the other commercial things you could add to it to make it commercial. And I disagree on that point, because there are many places in the county where they're operating the package treatment facilities for restaurants, for schools, for golf courses. And so, if somebody wanted to come in and put an investment into the tennis club, add a spa, add some of the new things that are commercial, I think it could be a viable place. And then, as also has been talked about, there's also a compromise option here, I think, for the county, and that is perhaps to rezone some of the excess areas there. You can see on the map there, there's some excess land there, that you could use the Cabrillo Racquet Club as the buffer, perhaps take it down to four acres rather than the eight-acre facility it is right now. Keep 10 to 12 tennis courts, put in maybe three to four one-acre lot houses, and come up with a compromise that might work with the developer and also would help the county to keep this wonderful facility. But I think to take away the entire facility, just to come up with eight substandard lots right next to this farm and surrounded by this farmland is really a mistake.
Any questions, Lynn?
What's your background?
I'm a geologist, actually.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker, Robert Kelly, and then we'll take a short break.
Hello, I'm Robert Kelly. I live at 7261 Los Coyotes in Camarillo, California. I'm a local attorney. I run the National Champion Eagle Soccer Club, and I am a member of the Pleasant Valley Recreation and Parks Board. Today, I'm only here speaking as a private citizen. When I heard that this particular facility was going to be taken out of play, first thing I thought of is, yeah, we have a water drop here in Southern California. We also have another type of drought, and that's a lack of recreational facilities. The overdevelopment that has occurred in Southern California has taken a toll on the availability of recreational facilities for the kids and adults in the communities, basically from Santa Barbara to the Mexican border. If you read the newspapers carefully, what you see is, there's actual lawsuits going on, because certain groups are not able to get facilities to play their sports. I understand that this particular facility is rundown, and I only can speculate as to why it's rundown at the present time, but I believe that this particular piece of property should stay recreationally based. We have enough houses, as like the gentleman said before. Those houses can be built elsewhere, but this particular site cannot be replaced. If it is replaced with housing, no facility like it will come into play, not in our light times, I believe. I think we need more recreational opportunities, not less, and so I urge you to not approve this change. Thank you.
Any questions of Robert, before he steps down? Thank you very much. All right. All right, ladies and gentlemen, according to that clock, seven minutes after 10, we'll recess until 10:15. Reconvene the county commission, and as I want you to know, according to the government clock, that's 10:15, not 10:20. Okay. That's like herd and catch, trying to get everybody back in the room, I understand. We have one more speaker card before the applicant comes back up, Ms. Susan Johnson, and if you'd please come up. Oh, you're with the county ag, is that right, Susan?
I'm with the county ag.
Oh, okay. So, you're neither for or against.
Hi, I appreciate your allowing me to make comments. We haven't decided, I guess, whether I'm staff or what I am, but anyway. I am Susan Johnson. I am the Chief Deputy Agricultural Commissioner. I'm here representing Earl McPhail. I am formerly the Pesticide Use Enforcement Deputy for this county around the pesticide use enforcement program here in the county until last January. I have regulated pesticide use enforcement and land use for about 25 years in three counties and for the state of California. I also am a founding member of the Ag Pictures Alliance and on their land use subcommittee. I was instrumental in developing the buffer policy that we are now talking about in conjunction with Julie Buller, my former- with Julie Buller, my former planner, and I sit on the board for Habitat for Humanity of Ventura County, just in case you wanted to know if I knew what I was talking about. Basically, this is a balancing act, this business of ag-urban interface. This is not quite so straightforward. This is an existing interface. Most of the reason that we made the recreation, re-recommendation that we did is because this is an existing interface. This is an existing interface that, from our standpoint at the Ag Commissioners Office, works just fine. We have had virtually no complaints from this area, and believe me, we get them. Were there somewhere else in the county where we had had numerous complaints from people about that interface, we might feel differently about the buffer policy, about the buffer distance. We believe and respectfully totally disagree with the people who have said that they believe that houses are a more troublesome interface than a recreational facility. It has been our experience all over this county that we generate many more complaints from any place where children are present, playing games, dropped off by their parents, unaccompanied by their parents, doing recreational things. These include schools, parks, soccer, you name it. We really, we receive more complaints for the, from those by far than from residential areas. And we have residential areas all over this county. We have 90 schools within a half a mile of agriculture in this county. The buffer policy deals entirely with other issues of dust, noise, and not pesticides. There is a zero tolerance for drift regulatorily in pesticide regulation. So that is dealt with on a regulatory basis. Certainly, the buffer policy is designed to make that simpler and easier for the existing agricultural installation, but much of the buffer policy is in fact to accommodate dust, noise, and all those other things that people don't want to be around when they live next to farming. We get many, many more complaints about dust, noise, bird cannons, smells, vehicle traffic, name it, than we ever get about pesticides at the Ag Commissioners Office. These are not something that we have a regulatory jurisdiction over, but we hear them. We are not using, the buffer, none of the buffer is on the grower's property, and we would never recommend that a buffer be on the grower's property. We recommended the buffers that we did simply because they appear to work in the situation that they have. We believe that the proposed interface is much less troublesome than the current interface. And if 70 and 100 feet serve them well for that facility, there is no reason why it should not serve them well in the proposed situation. And the last thing I'd like to say is, we are very reluctant to lose flexibility on small parcels. And the reason that we are so reluctant to do this is because these are the most desirable parcels for low-income and farmer for housing. If we do not have flexibility to occasionally reduce those buffer zones, we are not saying this is going to be farmer for housing. And there's no, you know, no. But if somebody came to us with a proposal for farmer for housing, of course, that would be fine. I mean, we don't say you have to build farmer for housing here and there. This is a private tennis court, and it's surrounded by high-end homes. It's a high-end tennis court. But we don't want to lose our flexibility on the rest of the small parcels in the county. We would like to be able to reduce buffers where it is appropriate and where those, that reduction in buffers serves the greater good, such as the case where someone would propose a low-income dwelling on a small parcel. You know, we are advocates for agriculture. I've been advocating for growers for 25 years. We just don't believe in this particular situation that the existing buffer is not adequate, and that's why we made that recommendation. And I'll be happy to answer your question.
Thank you. Any questions?
Leo? Did I hear you state there have been no complaints?
I don't recall that we have had a complaint since 1999 about anything at that facility. Now, that doesn't mean there haven't been any, but if there had been more than one or two, I would remember them. I'd get them all.
So, the people playing tennis, even with their children there, have not complained about the agriculture? And the agriculture, the farmers haven't complained?
So far as I know. So far as any indication we have, it's been, it works just fine.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions?
It has not been our experience that people go home when there are problems. These people may go home, but people generally do not go home. They complain.
Okay, anything else? Thank you. All right. The last person, like we said, is the applicant or his representative.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. I'll try to address some of the issues that have been brought up previously. I'd like to put some facts down as background, starting when we were doing our due diligence to purchase the property. It was quite a lengthy due diligence period that required us to dig a 25-foot-deep earthquake investigation trench about 400 feet of the property's width. 25 feet deep, the water table would obviously intercept that, and that answers the individual's concern that water would always be in that earthquake ditch. That earthquake investigative trench was required not to build houses necessarily, but to do anything major to that particular property, such as a major renovation, if you will. So it was important to us to find out if we could either build homes or make renovations or do whatever, because if it was in a, in line of an earthquake fault, everything would have been put off or not economically feasible. We did some, some tests that led us to believe that there would not be a fault issue, and so we invested the money to dig the trench and found out that there was not a fault issue that was gleaned over countless number of days and months to the point where it disappeared as an issue. The current owner, Dr. Carson, who had owned the club for maybe 20 years, in his pre-screening to the supervisors in 2001, he made mention of the fact that the club had never made a profit, even through the heydays. And at that time, there was around 400 members, I believe, I was told. We currently have about 80 members. That comes and goes. What a lot of the members may not realize is that Dr. Carson was closing the club. I practically had to beg him to keep the club open so we could close escrow with an open club to give us the option to perhaps do other things. This particular project is maybe three, four miles from my house. Very convenient. I love the property. I plan to build a house there for my family. My brother plans to do the same thing. As everyone knows, the housing market, certainly not what it was a few years ago. We had a meeting at the club with the members just a month ago or so, and I let the club members know what we were doing and what our plans were. We have always tried to keep our options open, and we have paid a monthly cost subsidizing that club, as the Carsons did, while these people play tennis and enjoy the club's facilities. To make a major change to the club, such as would be adequate to have a chance at getting the membership that it used to have, to have a chance at being profitable, would come close to $1 million of investment on that bet. It's very expensive, as I'm sure the Commissioners realize. We tried our best to keep the club open and keep it in operational form because we do have sympathy for recreational purposes. And we felt our, felt that, you know, we never planned to make a big profit on this property. We just planned to do what we thought was sensible development. We gathered a lot of input, talked to a lot of people, even had some people looking at the possibility of a tennis facility expanding there. Unfortunately, it just does not make economic sense. And at the club meeting we had a month ago, I told that to the members and made the offer to any and all of them that I would be glad to hand over the club's ownership for the exact amount of money, maybe even a little less than I have in it. It's not a situation where a developer's making, I forget the term, exorbitant profits, et cetera. The reality is, it just does not make sense as a tennis club to be profitable, which switches me over to, to the issues brought up by Mr. Lloyd Butler and others regarding the buffer zone. The buffer that is currently suggested for the south of the property, I think is 70 feet, the property line from which, where that 70-foot mark starts is over 100 feet to where the crops, strawberries, usually, I think there are peppers there now, are grown. I've measured that more than once, and the latest last, yesterday afternoon, very, very late in the day. There is a road that services this farming area that has been there in place at least 40 years from the overhead pictures that we had when we did the earthquake investigation. That road has been there for 40 years and may not need to be there for the next 40. I don't know why it hasn't changed. It seems to be an efficient way to move product in and out of the farming area. There's also an issue that I expected to hear from David. I guess it's common sense that if you have a club that has 400 members, maybe more if you want it to be profitable, that you're going to have a lot more traffic than eight homes. Even with the membership we have now, traffic on 118 is reduced because of a change of this particular usage for this site. That traffic change, it doesn't take much of a stretch of imagination to see how it would impact sewage. If 400 people are active members on a club, and it's not just members that play there, and obviously, members don't play there every day, but there are tournaments there throughout the year and on weekends where sizable, quite sizable numbers of people go. There's a lot of sewage issue associated with that, and eight homes would produce less sewage, even though the sewage issue, I believe, was covered in our environmental report and accepted and had been looked over by the county experts, et cetera. One very important issue here is the ag buffer, as it was mentioned. There's a very, I'm sure you're all familiar with it, but there's a section that was mentioned momentarily ago, waivers and deviations. And the reasons for waivers and deviations is the property would need to fall under one of these categories: existing topography, vegetative screening, physical features, function as a physical buffer between the farmland and et cetera. We believe we qualify under that particular exception because of the vegetation that has grown there for the last 20 or 30 years, creating quite a buffer. Also, there is a, a large ditch, for no better word, carrying water from the farm on, between the road that services the farm and the property. Modified farming cultural practices will occur through enforceable agreement, easement, et cetera. That doesn't apply. This would qualify as a waiver. Imposition of a farmland buffer would preclude reasonable use of the sensitive non-farming property due to parcel size. If you have, as it was mentioned a moment ago, three sides of farming on an eight-acre piece of property, and you enforce a 150-foot setback, it makes the property undevelopable. And that leads me to my last issue from, from my side, and that is property rights, property ownership rights. I didn't by chance find this property that no one else could have. The doctors had been trying to sell that property for, I think someone said, close to 10 years. There's been a lot of opportunity to step up to the plate and buy it, to do with what individuals wanted to do with. So many members, you would think they could put together a group of people to buy it at a reasonable price. That never happened. I stepped up to the plate, bought the property, put the investigation in, and now I own the property. I will not keep it as a tennis club, just period, will not, because it does not make economic sense, and those options are gone at this point. So, to the reality, I'm the property owner. It makes sense to put a low-density housing there. Seems to be highest and best use, and I request the approval of the Commissioners and would now entertain questions if there are.
Any questions for Mr. Mohay? Thank you.
Thank you.
I think I have one question.
David?
Yes. Had you considered any other options of, for example, of having fewer houses and still keeping some tennis courts?
We have considered just about every possible option to try to break even on this property and, and move on to the next project. It really doesn't pencil out if you work it that way. And it was brought up by the Agriculture Commissioner a moment ago. It's very easy, if you want to be, just please be objective. How many kids and people are exposed to possible chemical overspray, et cetera, as a tennis club, when the courts are literally up against the property line in an aerobic activity, competitive sport? There's no way that you can overlook that as a safety issue, if that is a real issue, and it should be, and I think it is, the issue about less traffic on the 118. That's a safety issue. We're here to provide that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. We'll go to staff now. Any follow-up or additional information that the testimony has produced?
I don't have any follow-up questions. A lot of the comments that were raised, were raised primarily in the comments to the initial study and MND, and you were able to review our response to those comments. However, if you have any questions for me, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Any follow-up questions to staff? Commissioner Dukas?
Could we, could you, with your laser pointer, point out the 70-foot buffer zone versus the requested one from the Butlers?
No, because...
Please.
I don't, I don't know the scale of this photograph. What you could do, though, is in your staff report, there's a copy of the track map that was included. You can see the dimensions on the parking lot. You can see the dimensions on the property line.
No, I didn't use it.
Okay. Do you want to make staff look?
Yes, if you turn to Exhibit 5, which is the track map, if you look at, for example, taking the southerly property line, lots number four and five, you'll see the scaled dimensions on each property line. So, for example, the line which differentiates...
May I interrupt you for a minute? Let me get out my big map.
Got it.
And maybe, for the benefit of others that are in attendance, we can look at a big map and talk about the difference.
Sure. Excuse me, I'm going to scroll down to the slide which includes the track map, so somebody has something to look at.
Good idea.
Hope you don't get dizzy. Okay, this is Exhibit 5, which is in your packet. You have a full-size copy of it. Taking, for example, this property line, proposed property line between four and five, that's 104 feet, little over two inches over, excuse me, two tenths of...
I'm sorry, I didn't see where the red pointer went.
This line, that's 104 feet. So, take about seven tenths of that, which would be approximately right there, that's the proposed buffer line. If you look at the west property line, there's a 100-foot setback as conditioned. If you look at this dimension here, from this point to this point, it's 225 feet. So, a little under half of these lots would be subject to the buffer.
So, we would be creating these lots, but those lots would be limited? We would be creating eight lots, and yet you're bisecting those approximately?
To clarify, you're not creating a property line when you create the buffer. The buffer would be, the area that encompasses the buffer would be an easement managed by the homeowners' association, within which the vegetation would be installed and managed. So, another setback you should take into consideration are just the standard building setbacks. You have 20 feet from the front property line, I believe that's five from the side, and when you account for those setbacks, it dramatically reduces the developable area along lots one through five.
But we're not creating those lot lines?
No.
Okay.
The buffer does not create a lot.
Okay, let's just stay consistent with what we're trying to say. What I'm trying to get at is a very basic question. Is it unreasonable to apply the full buffer to the project? And right now, I'm thinking, we can't base our decisions on issues outside of our purview. That is to say, we can't decide what's the best, you know, profitable situation for the property owner. But we do have to abide by what's reasonable. And these lots, we're talking about 41,000 square feet, and would it not be considered reasonable to have 20,000-square-foot lots, 30,000-square-foot lots, something less than that?
Okay. If I understand the question correctly, first off, would 150-foot buffer be a feasible mitigation measure for this project? It would effectively change the project description. So, take, for example, Lot 4, which is this one. If you implement 150-foot buffer from this property line in this lot line, it effectively eliminates the potential to develop that lot.
But we're not deciding lot lines? Am I clear on that? We are not deciding lot lines?
Right, right, excuse me.
Okay.
Okay. The setback from the property line, which would be 150 feet for the easement and the vegetative buffer, from the south property line and the west property line would eliminate the ability to develop Lot 4. If you do that, that mitigation measure is, basically, you can't implement the project with that sort of mitigation measures, infeasible. You really should be requiring an environmental impact report and a statement of overriding considerations if you feel that you need to go there. If you feel the 70-foot buffer and 100-foot buffer is inadequate and you need 150-foot buffer.
I'll ask, I'll follow up on that statement of overriding considerations needed in order to impose the full buffer.
Excuse me, clarify.
Yeah.
If you allow me.
Sure.
Either one of two things would happen, have to happen, if you decided to go with 150-foot buffer along the south and west property lines. Either the applicant would have to revise the project description such that you would no longer be proposing the eight lots, because obviously, you couldn't develop all eight lots. It would render the project, you know, impossible. Or you would state that, "We feel that mitigation measures that we are proposing are inadequate to reduce impacts to less than significant level. You cannot adopt the MND as an appropriate environmental document for this project. We would have to go back and prepare an EIR with a statement of overriding considerations." And then we would come back to you and you would have to consider the EIR at that point in time. Does that make more sense?
Yes, that's a lot clearer. The other thing I was wondering is, what about second dwelling units like granny flats? That's something that would be conferred by right? Is that correct?
Yes, assuming that they could comply with all the regulations for a second dwelling unit. One of the reasons why they're required to have a 40,000-square-foot minimum lot size is in order to accommodate a septic system that could provide for the primary dwelling unit and a second dwelling unit.
And last question. When there's discussion of the road on the Butler's property, is it in keeping with the newly adopted policy that all of the buffer is to be provided by the developer, not by the farmer?
All of the 70-foot buffer from the southerly property line and all of the 100-foot buffer from the west property lines on the subject property, if you feel that a larger buffer is required, so, for example, 150-foot buffer from the southerly property line, then, no, you're not meaning 150 feet on the subject property. You only, you have a 70-foot setback from that property line.
Yeah, maybe I wasn't clear with my question, but in my mind, the discussion of the existence of the road and its assumed continued existence for being the reason for having a less, you know, having a fewer feet buffer, that puts the burden on the existing farmer, rather than the burden being properly borne by the developer. And is that consistent with this new policy? I know there's flexibility for small parcels in order to accommodate farmworker housing, but is it consistent with the policy to get, to have that buffer be borne by the farmer?
May I take that one? This project came along at a time when the buffer policy had not yet been adopted even by APAC. They were putting together a buffer policy. When I arrived, I noticed that APAC would often speak in terms of the distance between the proposed new structure, habitable structure, and the cop line. When they finalized their policy, they did not do that. They finalized the policy that talked about measuring the buffer from the proposed new development to the common property line. That was to allow the farmer on his property to have all of the use of his property. So, the context that you're reading was conversation that was part of developing the policy at the time. It is a part of the context and the conversation that was happening at the time. This project and one other project that were coming through the system at the time allowed a lot of that conversation to happen. But again, the policy is to measure from the proposed new habitable structures to the common property line. Anytime you see anything else, it is disinforming you of the context. If you have more questions about that, I can answer them, because it's a fascinating subject, but I'll leave it there.
Well, thank you.
Any other questions?
There's been discussion about tournaments and where would those tournaments be held if, you know, and we know that this, we've heard from the applicant, that this facility is not going to be a tennis facility anymore, he said with certainty. Where are those tournaments going to be held? Where's the analysis of where those people will be moved?
I don't know. There's no policy or regulation that we enforce that requires us to look into that. So, what, you know, as explained in the response to comments in the MND, we're looking at impacts to recreational resources, we're looking at impacts to public recreational resources, because, of course, we have no legal authority over a private recreational facility. So, we did not look into that, and I'm not qualified to answer where the tournaments would go to.
That's it. Thank you very much.
Any other questions to staff at this time? Okay. Any other comments from the ag commission? Okay, any other speaker cards? Going once, going twice, third and final offer. I now close the public hearing on this matter. It's time for the commission's deliberations. Commissioners, your pleasures.
Well, I just want to offer up my thinking process on this. We're bound by very specific things that we're supposed to look at, and your profitability is just not part of our decision-making process. So, all that information, you know, as a person, I might feel very sympathetic and understanding and not want to be there, but it wouldn't impact my decision about the appropriateness of the land use. And in my opinion, it is not an appropriate land use. My impression of all the testimony that has been given is that this has worked, and that the discussion about the buffer had to do with pesticide drift and all the impacts that farmers have on others, and there really wasn't a lot of discussion, other than Mr. Butler and the Bliss, or I've forgotten his name, regarding the impact that goes the other way. And I don't think that's right. I think that it is a significant impact that this will, and I think there's even a SEQUO provision regarding impacts to a project that divide an existing community, and we've got an existing community here, and it's going to be impacted. And I don't see any discussion about that. I see, you know, well, we don't have to, because it's not a public facility, but it's an existing facility. So, in my mind, that is a glaring omission in this MND. So, I would not support the general plan amendment and the, you know, I would not support this project because of the inadequacy of the analysis with regard to the existing use, and that, I'm trying to flip to the back, so I could just make a motion to deny...
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two. Thank you. That we, that the SEQUO document is not adequate because of what I said before, I'm stopping repeating it, and that the SEQUO document would not be adequate per staff's instruction if we tried to impose the 150-foot buffer, and that the land use is not compatible. And I think that's it.
I have a motion to deny based on the recommendations. Do I have a second?
Second for purposes of discussion.
I have a second for purposes of discussion. Commissioners, comments on the motion?
Can you restate the motion?
Deny based on, that we do not adopt the MND because of its inadequacy with regard to dividing the existing community, and that in order to impose the 150-foot buffer, the project would no longer match with the MND, and that therefore, we don't go on to make the general plan amendment, or the zoning amendment, or the track map approval, because we don't have, you know, anything but the track map as it's presented with the inadequate buffers.
My issue is that we have a unique interaction between properties, and the existing zoning allows for commercial development, and commercial development tends to have people go home at night, and tends to have people arrive early in the morning, but not at 5:30. And the dynamism of the ag that is occurring next to that is potentially constrained by the fact that it is dynamic, and that the Lloyd Butler family has existed as an ag operation relative to the existing commercial. So, for that reason, I'll support the motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Moher.
I need to just get some of my thinking out on this. We are committed to assist and promote agricultural resources in this county. Secondly, if the tennis club weren't there, I wouldn't have any problem with this at all. I guess if I were an owner of a business, and the business were consistently losing money, I'm not sure I'd stay in that business, but that's not an issue that we're debating here. Thirdly, I think the planning department did an excellent job on this project. They addressed all the issues according to the rights, and they showed that the applicant has a right to this project. However, because you have a right to do something regarding land issues, it does not follow that it should be done. I believe if a vote were taken and people were deciding this, and we are representing the people, that they would not approve getting rid of a tennis facility for homes. So, that's my thinking, and I will support Commissioner Dukas' recommendation.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
I have a real appreciation for both sides that are presented on this issue. I've got, but I too have particular concern about the issue of the interface between, that currently exists between the present zoning and ag, and the impact it would have if it was changed. I have a real problem with this 70... I have a real problem with this 70-hundred-foot buffer modification. Having been around ag my entire life and having earned my first dollar probably in ag, I can appreciate a lot of the issues that go with that. Having lived adjacent, resided adjacent to ag property, I can speak firsthand from the impact that residential has on ag. This project was obviously put together years ago or conceptually put together years ago in a situation that spoke to twice the size of the proposed project now in the number of dwellings in that we were talking about 16 units or 16 possible residences and 16, and 20,000 square foot lots. That's been halved, obviously, as a result of some earlier discussions. But what I noted in comments, and I think information came from staff, as it relates to sewage and septic tanks is that, and it was brought up again related to possible granny units or second residences on the lots, is that in order to accommodate potential second residences on the lot, should the property owner, should it go forward and the potential buyer choose to put in another residence, i.e. granny flat, that the only way they can do that is with a minimum lot size of 40,000 square feet. I think that's what I heard staff say, which just adds further to, in my mind, to the issue as it relates to septic. And I can appreciate the fact that high-impact areas that have an influx of people coming in to use the tennis club and the facilities, et cetera, et cetera, do contribute to the issue of sewage. 400 people, 400-person membership over a period of time that uses the facility is going to do that. And I don't know if you can equate the fact that it'll be reduced by, the impact will be reduced by only having potential septic input from eight residences. Eight residents could be 20, could be 20 units, 20 people per residence theoretically. So I'm not sure if that washes. I appreciate the fact that it's not, that it is, at this point, appears to be a profit and loss situation, but the applicant stepped into this project, in fact, purchased the project, having considered all the potential options, including the fact that the racket club was not a profitable operation. And it's really not, as you said, somebody said previously, it's not within our purview to determine whether or not it's beneficial to us or the applicant profit-wise to make our decision based on that. Therefore, I too would support the proposed action submitted.
Any other comments? Okay.
Wait, excuse me. If I could be recognized for a moment?
Certainly. Proposed recommendation.
As I understand it, if you could possibly just recap where we are at this moment as far as the support goes for your motion?
Support right now represents four for denial based on...
Okay. I just wanted to point out, Commissioner Duquesne had mentioned the basis, and I just want to make sure we're all on the same page, was that the MND did not consider the impact of the loss of an existing private tennis facility. And I just wanted to point out that that would not be a legal basis in which to find the MND inadequate because it's not a requirement. Then there was a mention about the agricultural buffer and I just wanted, I wasn't sure if that was part of your motion because it seemed like the way you stated it was based on that, your opinion that the MND didn't properly consider the loss of the private tennis facility. And on the ag buffer, there's been a lot of talk about it being a policy, but just to make clear to you, that the board supervisors, that was brought to the board supervisors and they rejected that as a policy of the county as far as adopting a buffer ordinance. So that's not something that you are bound by as far as a state of public policy in the ordinance code or in the general plan. So I just wanted to clarify that. There's been other discussions, so maybe remake the motion another way perhaps.
measures other than the ones that are recommended by staff? Do we have the discretion to impose a 75-foot variable buffer?
Well, I guess the answer, well, you can recommend that the board, that you feel that the mitigation measure as, for example, 70 feet is inadequate, however you feel the 75 foot would be.
All right. Now I know a direction to go.
Okay.
Then the MND, in my opinion, in my judgment, is inadequate because it does not analyze a project that could accommodate an adequate buffer that would be borne by the applicant and not the adjacent landowner. We don't, we couldn't, as the project, as the project is described, we couldn't say, "No, we recommend 150-foot buffer" because this would not be the project that would accommodate the 150-foot buffer. There would have to be a different project. Is that legally sufficient?
Are you suggesting that they should have considered an alternative project? That's not required in an MND process. Maybe we're getting to an EIR?
Then perhaps an analysis of alternatives that have been proposed. I mean, there've been alternatives proposed to change the buffer, to allow for some housing and keep a reduced number of tennis courts. There has not been an alternatives analysis and perhaps there should have been? And perhaps instead of an MND, we should have had an EIR?
Well, you could recommend that you find the MND to be inadequate for its failure to, or in your opinion, that the mitigation measures are inadequate, but there's no requirement. They do an alternatives analysis in a mitigated negative declaration because it's what's agreed to by the applicant.
Understood, understood. So in my opinion, the MND is inadequate because it can't include an analysis of alternatives and therefore, an environmental impact report should have been required in order to impose mitigation measures that would be sufficient to protect adjacent uses. Is that legally sufficient? I feel like I'm being told that I cannot deny this project and I would look for some assistance. I'm looking for assistance here.
Hold on one second.
Before we finagle the motion, as the secondary of the motion, too much more, maybe the thing to do is withdraw the current motion and see if we can craft a motion that meets the needs. Because the more we start, for me, the environmental document is not the issue. For me, it is, we have a current zoning which has one set of uses and we are being asked or recommended to the board to change that zoning to something else which creates a whole new set of interesting issues. So...
I'll withdraw the motion.
I'll withdraw the second. You draw the second?
Yes.
Motion is off the table. Mr. Chair?
Yes. If I remember in the past, we've simply made a motion to deny the recommended actions. Do we have to specify any specific reason?
I think that's what legal counsel's been saying, that when you do this, you have to have a specific finding to base that upon, unlike a CUP or other actions.
Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm just saying that if you are going to make a finding based on something that wouldn't be adequate, legally adequate, that would be a problem.
Okay. So we could make a motion to deny the recommended actions. Get a second and take a vote?
Well...
You still need to craft your motion such that there is a finding for denial. Okay? And either...
Yeah. I think you're going to want to let us know why you would be denying it because it will obviously be appealed to the board and we'll want to address those issues so the board can make that decision. So we would want to know your reason, but I would agree with County Council on the points that she has made so far about the environmental document determination. Perhaps your issue is not with the environmental document, as Commissioner Bartelsa said, but with the project or the setbacks itself that you would like some different analysis on or you'd like the board to be aware of.
Well, I thought I understood that an MND doesn't need an alternatives analysis section. Is that correct?
That is correct, but if your issues are perhaps with the setbacks and you wanted to let the board be aware that you're denying the project because you don't feel that there is adequate analysis perhaps on the setbacks, then we would do some additional analysis or have some more information when we go to the board on appeal.
Well, just, we're being asked to make a change in the overall zoning and the entitlement is for a tentative track map. So I'm not sure how to craft the motion, but my logic here is that we have an existing community which is commercial plan development, which has a set of rules and guidelines that are allowed within the current adopted matrix. We have an existing ag operation. We have an existing community around it. We have a proposed project that in order for it to move forward, has to get a general plan amendment, which then removes what for me is a current buffer between, within the existing community. It's the piece that creates the uniqueness of the existing community against that foothill. So I'm not sure that the, so to change, to recommend the change of the zone, I can't support simply because it makes a fundamental change to the community, which exists fine right now. Now, I understand that the applicant wants to build houses there and in order to do that requires a residential exclusive zoning, which means that the, but I'm stuck back at the, we have an ag residential interface that has this little buffer in the corner which says, without, I mean, country club, if you drive out there, country club goes up the hill and you have this buffer all the way up the hill until it crashes into residential on the other side. So mine's just more fundamental. I've got this environmental document that gives me all of this information and analysis, but where I am is the zone change creates additional, removes buffering that exists right now, so I can't support the zone change. That would be my motion.
Okay.
Does that get around, I mean, I read all the environmental analysis. I just, as someone standing outside, changing it from this commercial planned development, existing community, to residential exclusive and planning houses there creates, it may lower the intensity, but it removes an existing buffer.
And I would, I guess, just appreciate some direction to staff because we do have the right-to-farm ordinance for these specific. We have the Ag Commissioner's office and their staff doing exactly what the board has told them to do. The board has denied this 150-foot, 300-foot flat out and said, "We want you to go to the experts, planning department, on this issue." And then they have done their analysis, they've come, and then, so the buffer issue is a little bit confusing to me as staff if we're saying that you don't believe with the right-to-farm ordinance and what the board has directed agricultural staff to do to come back and make recommendations because I think that is what this document is that's presented to you. That's our best work and our best effort based on the ordinances and the plans and the policies that the board has given us so far.
Commissioner Duquesne?
I'd just like to jump in with some of my notes from Susan Johnson, who said the existing interface works just fine and that she didn't have any complaints about the existing interface. That's testimony and evidence and that the reason for the flexibility in the setbacks is to allow for farmworker housing, but that isn't the project that we have before us. We don't have a, we don't have a project saying that we're going to supply farmworker housing.
Can I ask you, Commissioner Duquesne, would it be a different finding if it was farmworker housing or single-family housing that the planning staff would need to look at for setbacks?
Well, I certainly think that would be a more compelling need in county housing. Farmworker housing is more compelling need than, you know, these more high-end homes.
I guess, okay. Kind of counter, do you have something else?
No, not at the moment. Just...
I'm watching all the fingers, so...
You know, I've never been in a situation on this commission before where the clear will and intent and understanding of at least four expressed views have been questioned so vigorously so as, so we can't vote against a staff recommendation and I'm kind of shocked by that.
Oh, I would completely disagree. We were just saying, if you want to deny the project, that is completely within your purview to deny the project, but direction back to staff because we know we're going to the board is very important. And I think just what County Council is trying to say is you can deny it for some particular reasons, but for instance, you wouldn't, you couldn't deny it on the adequacy of the environmental document if what you were wanting was an alternative analysis because that's not required under SEQUA for an MND. So I think we're just trying to caution you to be careful, but not at all to make a decision on the project.
So we couldn't make a recommendation that an EIR should have been performed instead of the MND?
Yes, you can make that. You have to add some findings because you're going against the findings that are already existing in the staff report to the contrary. So you would make your recommendation to deny the MND is inadequate and make whatever findings you feel exist as to why it is inadequate and then you can go forward with your denial. So I don't, I didn't mean to imply at all that you can't do what you want to do. I was just giving you some legal direction because as you can see, this is a contentious issue and we never know which way it's going to actually go. So we just want to have a nice, clean record that's legally substantial. Does that make sense?
So do I have another motion?
Well, I'm not sure. I, I mean...
You pay you all this money.
I know.
What, 48 cents a mile?
Let's go back to, under the current county policies, adopted county policies, because I think this got sort of skewed by, we kept talking about an unadopted set of policies. Under the current county policy, because it's a general plan amendment, the environmental analysis is to illuminate the pieces of what currently exists and by having the club existing use, I'm trying to take, the club's not there in this analysis. What currently exists is someone can come in and propose a commercial plan development on that piece of property and not do... on that piece of property and not do a general plan amendment.
Yeah, they could propose a commercial development with the very extreme septic limitations out there. It would be a package switch treatment plant that we would look at.
Exactly.
Exactly.
Okay. So... And... I mean, this, for me, this comes to the tremendous reliance on CEQA that somehow it's going to do something magical. The existing community has some significant buffer issues just because of what's there, and by changing its current use to a new use, it just is different buffer issues. Same, because the only thing, the only change event here is the removal of the tennis club and that blight to then having this project come forward with a proposal. And my problem with it is taking it from something that is there for business hours as a wake event to changing it to residential use, where the rights and privileges of residential use inherent in that use are going to be in conflict with the commercial farming operation, buffers or no. Because the rights and privileges, yes, we have a right to farm ordinance, but if I'm doing harvesting, and just so everyone knows, I am a farmer, so the... And Mr. Butler and I have been through this before on different sides of the table. My concern is that in the attempt to have the buffers get all of the stuff and have the right to farm ordinance, that somehow magically we're going to take away the real conflicts that exist when you have housing rising above an operation that is allowed to continue, but five years from now or 10 years from now, those conflicts are going to... I mean, however it shifts, we are trying to anticipate something in a relationship, and so far, I'm seeing that the relationship isn't real happy. I mean, take out the tennis club. So the environmental document and all of its triggers and all of its points don't get to that. So my non-support of this right now is, the existing community and its change are creating some issues which we can't get to. So I can't support the recommended action as a technical overview. I'm not... Your environmental analysis is wonderful, given all of the policies that are available. Now, I don't know if that can then craft a motion that makes findings.
Sounds like you're saying you are against the general plan amendment?
I've been saying that. I've been saying that from the get-go.
Commissioner Alder?
I can't recommend...
I don't think we can nitpick the CEQA document. I don't think that's worked, but if you look at page 33 in your thing, which is the recommendation, recommended action under general plan amendment, and it says under G, I'm on page 33, or for the rest of your author, it's G in the recommendations of the planning department. It says, "Find, based on the evidence provided in Section C to the Planning Commission's staff report dated October 7, 2007, Exhibit 1, Staff Report, that the proposed general plan amendment is in the interest of the public health, safety, and general welfare, and is in good planning practice, and is consistent with the Ventura County General Plan." Now, that last section is consistent with the Ventura County General Plan. We are... This is an amendment to the Ventura County General Plan. So do I have any problem if that's a motion?
No problems.
So moved.
I have a motion for...
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on the new motion?
So can we clarify that? You're finding the CEQA document is inadequate?
I'm sorry?
You're finding, your recommendation is not a CEQA-related?
No.
It's just related to the general plan amendment. Do you recommend denial based on the reasons you just stated?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, Mrs. Rodriguez, is this so, still so general that you can't go to the... When you go to the board of supervisors, if this is appeal, which I'm sure it will be, are we helping you at all, or are we hindering you?
No, that's fine. If you're going to say that the general plan amendment, that you can't make that finding based on the interest of public health, safety, and general welfare, is that where you're going with that?
Yes, I'm going with that.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Just to clarify, it wouldn't be an amendment to the board. You're just making recommendations as a board.
Right, right. It's all recommendations. Okay, then I have a follow-up question. Then, we've said that the general plan amendment, based on, it's not good general welfare, et cetera. Are we saying we certify and adopt the other recommended actions? Are we denying all of those? Or are we just remaining silent, or do we have to make a...
You need to recommend on all points.
We need to recommend on all points.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. We need to...
You need to recommend on all points, and if you're going to go against the CEQA document, you need to make findings in that regard as well.
So, your motion is to deny based on it doesn't provide the best interest of public health, safety, and general welfare, but you have other actions to certify and adopt, one and two, and the zoning and the subdivision?
Just a question. Can we, as a commission, make a recommendation that instead of an MND, that an EIR be prepared that includes an analysis of alternatives?
Based on, I think based on what you said so far, you're feeling that the buffer was not an adequate mitigation measure, you could recommend an EIR?
Okay, can we include that in the motion?
You may.
Well, if you do that, then you're talking about page six, and there are some specific conditions of approval, 12, 13, 14, 25.
Well, then it would be inconsistent, though, if you're voting against the project on the general plan amendment.
Right, but if we have to make findings on every finding, we might as well say, this is talking about potential land use incompatibility. So if we're going to...
I think we just go with what you just... You could just go, just to deny the project based on the reasons you said, primarily general plan amendment, as a result, you find that the CEQA document is inadequate as well.
And then further, do we need to go with the zoning amendment, that it is not in the interest of public health?
Yeah, same, pretty much the same finding as the general plan amendment. You've already stated those reasons for denial of the zoning change.
With the chair, whether the legal background care to restate my motion?
He didn't even say if he supported it.
Yeah, louder than a ball than me. Yeah, I see the big lineman coming at me. Ah, he's going right behind me. No, actually, I would not, perfectly honestly, because I can't support the recommended motion for me, so therefore, I'm going to have to rely on you to craft your own motion.
Then I'd like to try again. I'd like to recommend denial of the project based on G of the general plan amendment, and if the general plan can't be amended, there's no zoning amendment or subdivision tract map. So we don't have to deal with those issues, right?
Correct.
But I don't have any problem with CEQA. Do we have to deal with CEQA? Or, as Commissioner Dukas said, can we deny the motion based on the general plan amendments?
It's been going on normal.
Thank you. Could we deny the motion based on the general plan amendment, which is G under recommendation, and according to Commissioner Dukas, request that a full CEQA be prepared? Was that your request?
Yes, we have an analysis of alternatives, that we recommend an analysis of alternatives in an EIR instead of an MND.
Well, that's an interesting position, because it's, you're basically voting against the project as it is, because you feel it's not in good planning practice and don't support the general plan amendment or the zone change, so coming back with an EIR really wouldn't change your opinion on that, so I don't know that that's helpful.
Okay, then we just go with the general plan amendment and what follows with the zoning amendment and subdivision?
Yeah, you're fine. Just do it.
Do we all understand my motion, then?
Is there any confusion by staff or clerk?
Are we all okay with that? Because I'm not sure, but you're...
I think the planning director...
My motion, then, is based on number G, and that's all, which, again, would follow that the zoning amendment, the subdivision tract map would not be approved. Okay, that's where we are.
All right, any further comment?
Second.
Okay, any further comment on the new motion? Miss, staff?
Can you just do that one more time for me?
What?
The motion.
The motion. No. Okay, I'm going to do this just for clarity, all right? That it is the motion maker's position to deny based on the fact that you cannot find proposed amendments, either zoning, subdivision, or general plan, is in the interest of the public health, safety, and welfare, and that you cannot certify or adopt a resolution because you think the MND is inadequate for lack of alternative.
I don't think we want it...
All right, so, all right, but then what are we going to do about certifying and adopting? Recommendations, one and two?
You found it inadequate on the buffer issue.
Find, okay, then you find it inadequate on the buffer.
Mitigation measure inadequate.
All right, that's your motion.
If you say so.
Okay, and a second. All right. I disagree, and here's the reasons why. You're basing it on a buffer decision that the board has clearly said doesn't exist, so therefore, you're making a finding contrary to the board of supervisors. We're the technical body, we're not the decision makers, so therefore, it's a flawed decision based on the buffer. We've had the resident experts tell us that the adequacy of the 70 to 100 feet. We have no basis to decide 150 is better because, A, the board has told us they're not accepting it, and B, we have had no adequate technical information or evidence presented to us that it makes any difference. The second reason I can't is also the fact that you have an existing commercial use that obviously overburns the property next to an agricultural community, that if it had been brought before us today, would not be approved, for all the reasons we've gone through. Sewage, water quality, connection next to, and in fact, there is no buffer between the current use and the agriculture. So again, we would not even approve that project today. You're right, we can't consider the profitability of either of the parties about the proposed project. There's nothing to say that the proposed project would sell improfit, because maybe somebody doesn't want to live next to a farming environment, because that's something they would have to sign off on. At the same time, we are looking at the possibility of another commercial use coming in, and one of those could potentially be a nursery, which again, would create conflict within the agriculture community, introduction of foreign materials on both parties. So I personally feel that the MND is more inadequate based on the facts that we know that have been presented, both by the ag commission and staff, and the fact that to certify a CEQA is the same thing. At the same time, I believe it is within the welfare and interest of the community as for the reasons that have been stated. There is, we have a commercial use there. This is egg city all over again. We went through this, and the fact that we had a commercial entity within an agriculture that created a lot of problems. This product would reduce the amount of traffic, would reduce the amount of water issues, would reduce all the way around. So therefore, I can't support this motion, because I don't think you have the facts to support what you have stated, and I think on appeal, the applicant's going to win. So with that all said, all those forward the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Nay? The matter is denied, and it's automatically appealed, is that correct to the board?
No, they have to decide to...
It's not automatically appealed.
Okay, I just wanted to verify that, so the applicant knows what their next step is. They have, what, 10 days to file an appeal?
It's not an appealable issue. We're just making a recommendation to the board, and your recommendation is to deny, but the board makes the final decision.
Okay, so then this automatically goes to the board, is my point? The applicant has no other step to take?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we thank you for your time and your input, as always. We're going to take a two-minute break, because we do have another issue to cover today. Thank you. He's just getting coffee up your act. He doesn't have to be present. Okay. Bun, the commission is reconvened. We are now going to go on to item number six, which is a variance, LU 06-0076, a GNK gas station. Mr. Nermal Singh is the applicant, and our case planner, surprising enough, is Dan Clement. Dan!
Commissioner Chair, members of the commission, if we could just hold off one second while we get the PowerPoint presentation set up. Basically, we're here to consider a variance request which is associated with a project which actually involves three different entitlements. However, the commission is only acting on the variance today. However, I will describe to you all elements of the project, just so that you're aware of what is involved. The project involves a plan development permit, which is approved by the planning director, and also a lot merger, which is a ministerial entitlement, which is also approved by the planning director at a staff level. The project site is located on the corner of Wells Road and Vialletta Road. It's 310 Wells Road and 11025 Vialletta Street in the existing community of Saticoy. The general plan and Saticoy area plan, yet land use designations for the property are existing community urban reserve and commercial respectively. The zoning designation is commercial plan development. The project site involves five legal lots, two tax assessor parcels. Kind of confusing, but just want to clarify that. And the, all five legal lots, two tax assessor parcels are about .42 acres in size, and the project site is currently developed with the Cabrillo market. It's approximately 5,856 square foot market. Surrounding development consists of a mix of retail uses, stores, restaurants. The Saticoy Municipal Golf Course is located to northwest of the property site, and there are also residencies within the vicinity of the project site. This is a shot of the project site on the south side of Vialletta Road, looking to the northeast at the existing market. On the left-hand side of the slide, you can see the currently undeveloped area in which the new gas station is being proposed. Of course, I'll go over all the details of the project description. Of course, I'll go over all the details of the project description in a second. This is another shot of the project site. You can see the existing undeveloped area, the restaurants to the north of the project site. This is a slide of some typical development within the area. This is a market across the unnamed alley, which is adjacent to the north side of the project site. This is looking to the south, uh, you can see a number of retail uses and, and, uh, currently, oh, I'd call it undeveloped lot, uh, on the opposite corner from the project site. This is looking down Vialetta Street, you can see it's kind of a transitional area from retail to residential. This is, uh, residence, typical residence, this is located just adjacent to the project site. You can see the Cabrillo Market, which is built up to the Easterly property line. This is an existing warehouse, uh, I don't know exactly how that's being used, but it's, uh, my understanding it's light manufacturing, um, but I cannot confirm that, that's what I've heard from zoning enforcement. And finally, this is looking to the northwest of the project site. On the left-hand side, the building shown there, it's a veterinary clinic, and you can see the municipal golf course, uh, beyond. So, as I mentioned earlier, three different components to this project. The first component involves a merger of the five legal lots into one lot. The applicants have also applied for a planned development permit to construct a gas station, which would involve constructing, uh, two pump islands, five gas pumps with canopies, constructing new facades around the exterior of the market, and, uh, creating a new entrance into the market from the gas station site in order to have the cashier who serves the market also serves the cashier for the gas station. And the applicants are requesting a variance from you, the only entitlement unless you're acting today, uh, to reduce the parking requirements for the market and the gas station uses. The zoning ordinance states if you have two uses on one property, the parking requirements are the combined requirements for each individual use. In this case, the market requires 23 parking spaces, the gas station only requires two parking spaces, for a total of 25. They're asking to reduce the number of parking spaces from 25 to 16. This is a slide which, uh, shows an exhibit which is included in your packet. You can see the five, uh, legal lots, which would be merged into one, it would create one quarter lot on the corner of Vialetta Street and South Wells Road. This is, this has been presented to you, I'm sorry about the fuzziness of the duplication. So this is a site plan, you can see the existing market building. Here is the new entrance that would be constructed to get access to cashier for both the market and the gas station. On the currently undeveloped portion of the property, uh, the gas station will be built, there will be two islands, three gas pumps on one island, two on the other, new canopy will be built, parking will be provided along here and as well as in the rear of the market, there'll be a new trash enclosure, enclosure constructed right over here. There'd be landscaping provided along the street frontage, and access would be one-way entering from the unnamed alley along the northerly property line through the gas station site to Vialetta Road, and this is a right turn only, there's a triangular median here forcing right turning traffic. This is just a floor plan of the market, you can see the new, uh, entrance that would be constructed into it. These are the elevations of the market, which include the new facades, this is the new entrance from the gas station site. There'll also be new facades constructed on the rear and the front of the building, and, uh, improvements done along the east side of the building. And these are the elevations of the, the canopies proposed for the, uh, gas station with the pumps and the two islands and the trash enclosures, which would be constructed at the rear of the existing market. So, uh, there are specific findings you need to make in order to approve a variance, which are derived from the government code and have been replicated in the non-coastal zoning ordinance. And the non-coastal zoning ordinance states that the applicants have the burden of proof, of proving to your satisfaction that the standards of the variance have been met. And, as you saw in the staff report, what we included were the applicant's justifications to support each of the standards in our response to each. There are five findings. One finding only applies to, uh, solid, excuse me, hazardous waste facilities, so it's inapplicable for this project. So out of the four findings that must be made in order to approve the variance, we believe that only three of the findings have been met so far, and, excuse me, have not been, have not been met, only one of the findings have. Is that clear? Sorry, I misspoke there, sorry. So, the one finding we believe that can be met is the finding which states the granting of the variance will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or general welfare, nor to the use, enjoyment, or valuation of neighboring properties. The applicants state that, uh, the project will improve the safety for customers, there'll be more off-street parking, and will, the project will increase value, property values for the neighborhood. It's probably the case that the project would improve safety. Um, it could be argued that the project would increase property values, however, we have not received any empirical evidence to support this. And as I'm gonna be discussing in a minute, there are alternative projects that could be proposed and developed on this property, which could include a gas station use, which also could increase property values if you accept that argument, but would not require a variance. So, regardless, we feel that you could condition the project such that it can be found consistent with all the general plan policies and ordinance regulations, such that it is, uh, consistent with the public health, safety, general welfare, and welfare, so on and so forth. So, the three findings we believe have not been met due to a lack of evidence is, the first is, uh, there are special circumstances or exceptional characteristics applicable to the subject property with regard to size, shape, topography, location, or surroundings, which do not apply generally to comparable properties in the same vicinity and zone. The applicants have stated that due to the legal non-conforming use of the market, due to its deficiency in the existing parking, the fact that the market occupies two of the legal lots, up to 78% of the total surface area, there's a lack of landscaping and, due to the minimal off-street parking, that these are special circumstances about the property that are not applicable to other properties, and therefore warrants the granting of the variance. Well, as discussed in the staff report, if you look at other properties with the same, uh, land use and zoning designations of the property in the Saticoy area, uh, this project site is not unique. It's, has the same rectangular configuration as other lots, it's within the range of sizes for other lots, there are no topographical features of the lot which preclude reasonable development, it's relatively flat, and there are no natural resources such as agricultural resources or environmentally sensitive habitat on the site to warrant any sort of reduction in the zoning standards to allow the development to go forward. So, based upon these facts, we don't believe that this variance finding has been met. The second variance finding which we believe has not been met is that the grant, that granting the request of variance will not confer a special privilege inconsistent with the limitations upon other properties in the same vicinity and zone. The applicants have stated that the variance will reduce the degree to which they currently enjoy this special privilege of having a market without the requisite parking, therefore, it would not be granting them a special privilege, uh, unlike other, uh, properties within the vicinity of the site. However, that is true, they would, if you grant the variance, they still would not be meeting the parking requirements that are applicable to this use, which also apply to all other uses within the area, so you still would, in a way, we believe, be granting a special privilege to them. Uh, like I mentioned earlier, there's nothing unique about this property when compared to other properties with the same land use and zoning designations within the area, which would warrant giving them this reduction such that it would not be considered a special privilege. And, uh, finally, there have been no other variances granted, uh, for properties with a commercial plan development, uh, zoning designation within the Saticoy area, so... The third finding we believe has not been met is that the strict application of the zoning regulations as they apply to the subject property will result in practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships inconsistent with the general purpose of such regulations. The applicants contend that the strict application of parking standard would result in a parking lot on the undeveloped portion of the property thereby precluding any development of that area. Well, it's not exactly the case, because, as I mentioned earlier, you could construct a gas station on the site, albeit slightly different than what is being proposed, which would not require a variance, would not result in a parking lot. Basically, rather than merging all five lots into one lot and having the market and gas station function as one site, you could create a situation where the two entities operate separately, unseparately, the lots. I mean, where you would merge two of the lots to accommodate the market, merge the other three to build the gas station, you would eliminate the entrance to the market so that the cashier of the market would not be required to serve as the cashier to the gas station. You could construct a separate kiosk with a cashier on the gas station site to serve the gas station, or have a self-service pay-at-the-pump method such that you don't have to rely upon the cashier in the market. And, in doing so, like I said, the market and the gas station would function separately, but you would get the benefit of developing the site with a gas station. You would continue to have the use of the market, and you would not be required to grant a variance, so, you don't, in other words, you don't need to grant a variance in order to develop a gas station on the site. And, it's important to note, we, we presented these options to the applicants, and they're here, and hopefully, I'm hoping they'll speak about this, but they decided they did not want to go with our suggestion in order to avoid recommendation of denial for the variance. And they're here, hopefully they'll speak in regards to that. It could be argued that 23 parking spaces is excessive for the Cabrillo Market. If it truly functions as a neighborhood market, you're gonna have a certain amount of people who just walk to the site, ride their bikes, they're not gonna drive. So, if that is the case, we, we would need some sort of empirical evidence to show that it is in fact functioning as a neighborhood market, and you could do so by just doing a survey of customers who come in and give us some information to demonstrate that that is the case. However, we encourage the applicants to give us that, they have not given it to us, so we, we can't even make that argument at this point in time, so we, we have insufficient evidence to, uh, even go down that route in order to support a variance for this project. So, based on the fact that you cannot make, we don't believe you can make three of the findings to support a variance, we believe your recommendation, we're recommending that you should deny the project. In regards to environmental review, the SEQA guidelines allow for you to adopt an exemption for the project if you are going to deny or disapprove the project. So, you may find the project exempt, direct us to file a notice of exemption, and in doing so, that would reduce the statute of limitations period for your environmental determination from 180 to 35 days. So, pursuant to County Council's recommendation, we, we did include in our actions that, that a notice of exemption be filed. And I'll get to that in a second. So, the comments we received from today have been from the city of Ventura, uh, excuse me, Caltrans, and, uh, Dan Allen. You've been provided all the public comments. As you read in the staff report, because this project site is within the city's sphere of influence, and the city boundary line runs down the middle of Wells Road, when the applicants initially submitted an application for this project, we identified all those factors and pursuant to the guidelines for orderly development, we said, actually, at this point, it's more appropriate for you to go to the city and apply for annexation first, to see if they're gonna annex the property. The city initially stated that they were interested in annexing the property, and they considered it for about a year, and then after about a year, they, they switched course and said, thanks, but no thanks, we're not gonna annex the property at this time, we support the project pursuant to the applicant's agreeing to allow for an annexation in the future. Caltrans submitted comments, they said that if there's a driveway proposed on Wells Road, applicants need to obtain an encouragement permit, there is no driveway to Wells, uh, proposed, thank you Caltrans for commenting. And finally, we received an email from Dan Allen, uh, which you have been provided, and it states Mr. Allen's general opposition to the project due to traffic safety concerns, and I believe Mr. Allen is here.
Yes.
And will be speaking in a moment. So, our recommendations to you is that you adopt the resolution to deny variance case number LU 06-0076 based on applicant's inability to carry its burden of proof showing that the project meets the standards for variance as provided in the non-coastal zoning ordinance, find that the project is exempt from environmental review pursuant to the state SEQA guidelines, since we will be, we're recommending that you deny the project. And, the resolution should also state that you direct the resource management agency, planning division, to file a notice of exemption to shorten that statute of limitations period from 180 days to 35 days, and designate the planning division as the keeper of the records of proceedings for this project. Of course, once again, I'm summarizing for the record, but the action should reflect how it's been proposed in the staff report or how it's stated here. And that concludes my presentation, if you have any questions?
Any questions of staff? Commissioner Malter?
Does the applicant own the market?
Yes.
Okay. And just one other question, I'm... No, I'm, I'm, I'm fine now.
Any other questions? Thank you, appreciate it. All right, before we open the, uh, public hearing, uh, do I have any disclosures? Commissioner Malter?
I visited the site yesterday and, uh, had lunch across the street in a little Mexican market, which is excellent.
Yes, it is. Good stuff.
I did notice, oh no, that's all for disclosure, I visited the site, and, and, and walked around, looked in the market, looked next door, saw what Dan, you know, showed us in slides.
Commissioner?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Bertol?
I, I visited the site and have walked the neighborhood.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Um, I visited the site yesterday, I've known the area and the site for quite a long time.
Particularly the donut shop right down the street?
No, actually, it was, actually, it was a manufacturing company at the other end of the block, it was always a burglary victim.
No, hey, that is my favorite donut shop in the entire county, and I have, you know, several of my sheriff friends admit that's where they like to go.
Obviously, the antiques and the profession.
Oh, okay.
Would you, would you bring some to the next meeting?
Consider it done. What, would you like maple bars?
Yeah.
Uh, my disclosure is, I met with the applicant to discuss what the actual procedures are at the planning commission, just to bring them what the process is and, um, discuss with them. Uh, I too have stopped there many times, as I have already admitted, uh, yes, the Mexican area, absolutely, it's a great little neighborhood, uh, so I have visited many times, in fact, just this morning, on the way, so... With that, if there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. As I discussed before, the applicant gets to speak first if he chooses, uh, then we will call up the other speaker cards, which I have only three, and we do have one, um, comment card, which I'll pass around. And so with that, then, the hearing being opened, uh, Mr. Singh, did you want to speak? Please give us your name and address, sir.
My, my name is Nermal Singh, and the address is 1138 Elsinore Court, Ventura.
Thank you.
And, um, the owner of the property, and we have a corporation with about three cousins, and we own the market. We, we bought this, uh, property in 2003 with intention to combine it and put a gas station over there. And since four years, first we came to the county and they, they are asking so many papers they send that, and we were collecting it, paying the fees and everything, and then all of sudden, they say, no, it's not our jurisdiction, go to the city. Then we went to the Ventura city, and all the procedures we have to repeat again. In the course of time, I lost my hairs. It's almost four years, we go to the city and come back, and almost every week we go there, they, they ask like a ton of people with the fire brigade, with Caltrans, and so many people, we're just like sitting like you, and we... you, and we were sitting there. And after that, they say, "No, it's go to the county." And we came back to the county, and since it's like four years, we are here. We started in 2003 in November, and it's now 2007, like four years here. And we proposed that we should have a gas station there, combined with the market, so that we can have a better management, we can have just one cashier or two cashier, they can manage with the two things. Only the problem is the parking, you know. So, we, I am not a technical person to answer this thing. My architect, he will answer your all the questions, because as like movies, I'm just producer, he's the director, so you can ask him all the questions.
Okay. You don't want to ask questions?
I want to ask.
Well, okay, then ask him a question.
Hello, Mr. Producer.
Hi.
When staff was making its presentation, he said that we offered up a way to avoid this variance and still get you where you wanted to go. Why did you decide to go forward with the variance?
Yeah, this is only for the better management, you know. We can have just one cashier in the market, and then he can handle the both things. Otherwise, we have to hire another, another one more person over there, and one in the market and one in the there, two people to handle this thing. That was the only reason.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of Mr. Singh at this time? Thank you. Okay, and the card I have is Mr. Nehru Patel. This is the director.
Yeah.
Your name and address, please, sir.
My name is Nehru Patel. The address is 6220 Gorson Street, Simbello. As you know, the project has been going on since almost four years. Now, there are some points I want you to include in your discussion when you do it among yourself.
Excuse me, Mr. Patel, would you speak up? Would you speak up a little bit? I'm having difficulty hearing you. Thank you.
One thing is how you count the parking. Now, think about a gas station with a market and just the market. If they have two independent properties, what happens there? When you have a gas station and a market, people, what they do is they come, they park the car, get the gas, and if they want to use the market, they leave the car right there and go to the market and buy something, come back and leave. Now, same thing happens. Suppose you come there, you find that I don't want to use gas, I just want to buy something for the market. And if you find that, okay, all the spaces for the parking are taken, you would obviously park under the canopy if there is available. So, basically, the point I want to make is the spaces under the canopy are always used as parking, always, and everybody does that, everybody. And the code says no, and I think it's not fair. We have eight spaces like that that we can count, and they'll make it 16 plus 24. So, we are very close to where we should be for the code, and that's what the planning department is following. The second point I want to make is almost more than one-third of the market is storage, used as a storage, which is not normal. Normal is half of that. Now, the code does not distinguish between how we use the market is most of is for storage or not, because when used for storage, obviously, your parking requirements are reduced. The same thing when here, that the code does not identify that. If it would, then probably it will get some reduction in requirement, maybe a few or three less. So, that's another thing that you want to discuss. The last item is the way, suppose we provide all the 25 parkings, the way we are being asked to do that, obviously, what's going to happen is the vacant lot is going to go. There is nothing left. So, I'll compare this to something like, there's a sick man who has a big kidney. I have two kidneys. I can donate you one. I cannot give you two. If I die, why die? The code says a man, a human being, has to have two kidneys. So, if you want to donate, no, you have to donate two. You cannot donate one. So, that's where we are right now, and that's what I want you guys to think about, that the condition that has arisen that we don't have parking spaces is because of the existing market. We are trying to give whatever is available on our small lot through the market. We are not taking away anything, because the gas station itself is only in two spaces, and that's it, nothing more than two. The remaining everything else is being donated to this property. And that's all I have to say.
Anybody have any question? Any questions of Mr. Patel?
In our, in the report, it said that they ask you to possibly do a traffic, traffic, traffic study of the area. When I was there yesterday, I noticed that, I got there around 11:30, and I walked around, and then I went to the little Mexican restaurant, and I was parked all by myself. When I came out of the restaurant, there were about 10 cars parked. Now, that's across the street from the market. I don't know if that's typical, but is there any reason why you didn't try yourself to do a study to show that you didn't need 25 spaces?
Well, it's an obvious thing, because the way what I was thinking was that the spaces under the canopy are already there, and there is no reason to do the study. The topic study was done by the engineer, but I think you are talking about the other study, which is like a parking study.
A parking study.
I mean, we can do that if you want, and I'm sure he's going to prove that you don't need all this.
Well, I'm...
But I felt that it was not necessary.
Well, I'm under the impression that, well, let me ask the planning department. If he had done a study to show that the, or if there's an adequate study done to show that he didn't need 25 spaces, would it make it, would that affect your recommending the variance?
Yeah, I think that's what we had wanted all along. I mean, this, we don't like to come with a recommendation for denial, because we usually work, you know, the whole time behind the scenes for a year or two, trying to get a project that we can get approved. So, this isn't anything that we wanted to do. I think we asked for the study. We would have felt a lot more comfortable coming before you saying we had a parking analysis done over a period of time, and it showed that this was a community market. We really wanted to go that way, but there was no, there was no cooperation. That's what we wanted.
All right, so you heard what they say. Now, as far as parking under the canopies, I would be, let me go back a little bit. I think we need more gas stations in this county. I look, and they're going all the time, they're being closed, and there's very few being open, so I'm in favor of you having a station there. Now, I lost what my original point was.
Parking under the canopy.
Oh, yeah, parking under the canopy. I would never park my car under a canopy and walk into a market. I mean, I would be courteous enough, I think, to move the car to a parking space, because I wouldn't want to take a space that one of your other customers could use to refill their gas. So, I know personally, I would not consider a canopy, under canopy parking next to gas pumps as a parking space.
But basically, that's what everybody does. I'm sure you are aware.
Yeah, thank you. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
What was the reason for not having a study performed that would demonstrate that you had more foot traffic and therefore didn't need the number of parking spaces?
Well, one of the reasons was this parking under the canopy, that's one. The second was like storage. Those two things, if you look into that one, we already have enough parking.
Why was the decision made not to do the study to have, you know, a traffic engineer do a study? It's...
That was the reason. That was the only reason.
You thought it was self-evident?
We had done the topic study, not the parking study.
Okay.
Any other questions of Mr. Patel? Thank you, Nehru. Thank you very much. All right, the only other speaker card I have is for Mr. Dan Allen. We appreciate your patience. Do you see much of the fun we have up here?
Oh, yes. I mean, you just answered a call by the way.
Oh, I tell you. Your name and address, sir.
My name's Dan Allen. I live at 11080 Astor Street in Saticoy.
Thank you.
I'm a general contractor and builder, and currently still have a business plan. I am against the project. Number one item I'd like to just point out for the variance, I'm against the variance. I see that I'm just, this is just on variance, not the project, but I'd like to get into the record that this is, gas station is right next to a water well on one side of the street and a water well on the other side of the street. For contamination purposes, it just scares the life out of me. Traffic control problems going out. You have a restaurant, that wonderful restaurant that you go to is landlocked back there, and they're proposing that they're going to use the driveway and the parking lot as the sole egress from this place, not go out into 118 during the traffic hours if you've ever got caught there. That's pretty much what I have to say. And the other item that I propose, I am against the variance on one last item, sorry, is that doorway makes really easy access to buy your beer and get back in the car. Thank you.
Any questions of Mr. Allen before he steps down? I mean, you waited a long time. Get your mind on the sun here.
Well, folks, go ahead.
Any questions? No, we don't, oh.
Uh, no, the only, no, the only one that pops in my head, I'm going to tell him by himself.
No. What was? Thank you very much for your patience.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. American process here. All right. Mr. Singh, you have last say. Is there anything else you'd like to add, sir?
No.
You don't have to. It's just up to you. All right, thank you. All right, anything further from the staff? Going once, going twice, third and final offer? All right, before I close the public hearing, I want to make sure, okay, then I am closing the public hearing. Commissioners? Your pleasure.
Could I? Kim, could I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
The entitlement for a market, what is the basis of that? I mean, what does that give you? If I have a market entitled, how I, what are the constraints that are provided then?
It's issued, I mean, under what type of permit is it issued? Like a planned development permit?
No, no, no. If, I mean, okay, just as a planning, as a zoning clearance, not environmental health or any of the other stuff, what is that entitlement?
Well, I mean, you would issue the permit, it would entitle you to, you know, have some sort of a public interaction there. Then we have to look at the lighting and the parking and the noise and everything else that went along with having the market there, and the market is already permitted. Is that correct? Right, so now it's just the fact of adding the gas station, which then really compounded the parking problem, because it was a legal nonconforming use, so it never met the parking requirements.
As the market?
As the market.
Okay. And then the second part is, when you do a parking calculation, it's nine by 20? Is that a parking lot or a parking?
Nine by 20 or nine by 18? I think it is. And then you, yeah, and yeah, and then you can do compact also. You can do a certain percentage of the compact.
Okay, never mind. So, there was an attempt to make the parking places, I mean, I'm making some assumptions here, and one of them is that, given the project you have before you, you've tried to bring that project forward, taking out the time issue, it's, I understand, it's glacial, but, and then the second piece of that is, when we find a variance, it feels to me like a bludgeon in an existing community, because the entire community is essentially nonconforming. So, the variance for parking, you, it sounds to me like you were seeking a methodology to make findings that would allow some adjustment, but to call gas station, fueling aisles, parking spaces, probably you couldn't go there. The fire department alone, I'm guessing, you couldn't go there.
Yeah, that would even be a stretch for us, and I think we're really trying to stretch on this project.
Any other questions of staff? Commissioner Rodriguez, did you have something?
No questions.
Okay. Malter?
I don't have any commission of staff, but I would like to make a, I'd like to move something, make a motion.
That's circulate in your power. Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll start by saying I want a gas station to go there, I think, and even though the traffic really whizzes down Wells Road, I'm a little leery, but again, that there's no exit or entry on Wells Road to this market or this gas station. I would move that we accept the recommended actions, one, two, three, and four, and encourage the applicant to work something out, either with a traffic study? No, I can't put that into the motion. So, I would move that we accept the recommended actions. I think that the planning department is trying to work with the applicant to make this happen, and it just hasn't, and I'd like to see it happen, but not the way it's written at this point. So, I move to approve the recommended actions denying the variance.
I have a motion to accept the recommended actions. We'll have a second.
Oh, second for purposes of discussion.
I have a second for purposes of discussion. Discussion is on the motion. Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yeah, I have a real problem with the project as this proposed, and I, I saw it again yesterday, under the assumption that it had changed since the last time I, my last memory of it, and it really hasn't. I think staff has offered, in their, in their presentation, offered what appears to be a workable alternative, and the only reason I can see why it wasn't considered was because of the issue of staff costs in the operation of the overall project. I have a problem, I have a problem with a gas station there because of two reasons. One, that I hadn't considered, and I should have known, because my father-in-law used to work for Alta Mutual Water, and that is that there are pumps there, there are wells there immediately in the area adjacent. But the other, the other issue has to do with the ingress and egress out of that parcel. Presentation was made this morning that egress would be out of the alley, out of the station into an alley on the Wells Road, i.e. 123, and therefore, and it would be one way. Ingress would be then, since there's no entry off of Wells, excuse me, off of LA Avenue, would have to be off of Wells, which would have to be across a left turn lane on to Wells from Violetta. That creates a significant potential traffic issue, not only crossing, leaving Wells 118 onto Violetta, because the traffic flow, I just, I just don't see that as a really safe flow of traffic in and out of that potential gas station. The alley that's there could almost be called unimproved gravel. If anybody's driven it recently, it's pitted pretty badly. The restaurant's been there. The proposal is that ingress into the gas station would not be off that alley, but rather, obviously, since it's not on Wells, would be off of Violetta. Yet, you have a restaurant adjacent that has an alley, has parking behind it off of that alley, and you are going to have incoming traffic conflicting with exiting traffic that doesn't exist at the present time. I think that concept is flawed terribly. There's been some issue made about the fact that, as I recall reading, that the off-site parking would be safer, but they don't need 23 spots, 16 would be adequate, with no presentation reference to show that. I, you know, I've made this comment to staff before, and because it's been an issue with other, at least one of the projects, if not more, that I've seen, and that, in this case, has to... this case, has, has to do with traffic. Um, Caltrans is directly involved here, um, as is the CHP, because they are the, the agency, law enforcement agency of jurisdiction. The state has something called SWITERS, which is an acronym, that deals with issues of traffic, traffic flow, uh, traffic accidents, cause and effect, et cetera, et cetera. Um, they're readily available, uh, they're compiled yearly, and yet, in a situation like this, something, um, something that would be very helpful to this panel, uh, to know what the traffic situation is there as far as accidents and that type of thing, is not available to us and it should have been. Um, as it relates to issue of, of safety, uh, I assume has to do with, with damage or theft from vehicles or two vehicles if they're on the street versus in a parking lot, certainly law enforcement agencies throughout this county, within their juris, jurisdiction, are divided into reporting districts or RDs. If you give them an address, they will give you an ask for the, for the calls for service in that particular RD, they will provide it for you. It's not a problem, it's a no-brainer. Um, so when we get into future issues related to things involving traffic flow, potential conflicts and issues like this, um, I for one would benefit from that information.
Okay, I would just like to, to clarify a couple of things that you said. Um, first of all, the exit on Wells, there was that, that median that was a right turn only onto one-eighteen, is that correct, Dan? So there was no left turn available, and the same, that median was in the way, so you couldn't turn onto, uh, that access road. It was only, you could only get to it through the alley, and then you could only exit, right turn only onto one-eighteen. That's, that's what I saw in the presentation. And-
Correct.
The issue of, uh, safety design, that every, every project is run through the county transportation department for a safety design issue, um, so, so that's already looked at. The project went to Caltrans, and, and so Caltrans made their comment on it, and it also goes to the sheriff's department. So what I heard you say out of that is, the projects that we bring back to this commission that have any sort of traffic flow, which is probably just about every project we bring, you want safety or accident data?
No, I'm not asking for, for every project. I'm just, I mean, this, this one to me is obvious, there is a traffic flow issue. It's very clear. Uh, the traffic, the project we just, we just dealt with earlier certainly has a traffic flow issue, but it's not what we're talking about here. You have, uh, you have an entry and an exit out of this proposed gas station location. The entry is off of, off of Violetta, and you either come up Violetta and turn right into the gas station, or you cross Wells, onto Violetta, and go into the gas station. Am I missing something here?
Is that the way it is? What hap-
Or you come in through, or you come in through the alley, which is proposed as one-way traffic exit only.
Okay, let me, let me just take a look at that real quick.
Actually, let me, uh, pull up the slide, the site plan to show you. Okay, circulation pattern, note the arrows. This is the unnamed alley, this is Wells Road. This is Violetta. The circulation designed for the project consists of entering the unnamed alley, taking a right into the gas station site. Notice the arrows, all one-way through, coming out, taking a right-hand only onto Violetta. Now, it's kind of hard to see, but this triangle is the median, which forces you to take a right, and then once you get here, you have to take a right-hand turn onto Wells. And that's not to say people will actually abide by the traffic pattern, but this is how it's conceivably set up to work, so. Um, it, there could be an argument that, uh, individuals would come down Violetta, ignore the one-way out-only sign, and try to take a right into the gas station.
Well, trying to be practical and having some experience in the area, I don't think it's realistic.
That's fair. No.
Any other comments on the motion?
Um, just, just for clarity, um, we have to find if we wanted to grant the variance, and that's all we're hearing, uh, right now. We have to find that all of, all of the numbers have to be found. Well, I'm, I'm stuck on, uh, number one, that there, uh, page twelve.
Twenty-two.
Uh, number one, yeah, there are special circumstances or exceptional characteristics applicable to the subject property with regard to its size, shape, geography, location, and surroundings, but do not apply generally to comparable properties. And, um, that's, that's not my understanding of the situation at all. For that, for that one reason, I would support the, um, the recommended action to deny the variance.
Okay, uh, I can't support the motion, because again, it's, uh, what we're talking about is the parking is the fundamental issue, and then no empirical evidence. Um, again, uh, part of our investigative ability is to go and look at projects and see what we see. And, uh, that's what I'm bringing here, is the fact that this is a unique neighborhood type situation, that there's availability of street parking, um, again, factoring that people do walk to this particular entity. And so for me to, whether twenty-five or sixteen is adequate, I can make that just based on my personal knowledge of the, the area, and can support the fact that sixteen would be more than adequate based, again, on the off-street parking, not the on-side parking, and the, uh, nature of the neighborhood. Um, as far as, um, some of the other issues, I think, again, this is a very, again, unique area. Neither the city of Ventura, Ventura or Caltrans has any problems with this particular traffic issues, and that the, they have not stated they have any problem with it. So I find this is an improvement to the neighborhood, a benefit to the neighborhood that outweighs, um, nine parking spaces, in my person, uh, opinion and my knowledge of the property. So, um, I would oppose the denial, but that's my position, so. Any further comments? Hearing none, then I have a motion for denial. All those in favor to approve the recommended actions, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Well, two nays? Thank you. So the motion carries three to two to deny.
Mine.
Um, any further comments? Thank you, gentlemen, for your patience and your time. I think we've given you enough information and a staff direction. Um, as far as their appeal, is there a time limit that we need to notify them of?
Ten days.
Ten days from to- tomorrow or today?
Ten days from tomorrow.
Ten days from tomorrow.
Yes.
Ten days from tomorrow. You have ten days from tomorrow to appeal the decision. Okay? Thank you, sir. All right. Last item on the agenda. What does our illustrious leader have to tell us?
Okay, let's see. I don't have very much. I have, um, a, a good training opportunity for CEQA. Ron Bass, who is the CEQA guru, kind of for the state, is kind enough to, to come to us about every other year and, uh, train not only the, the county staff, um, from all agencies involved, but also city, city staff as well. So that's going to be on the twenty-ninth from nine to three-thirty. It's limited seating, it's in this room, it fills up, so we want to see if any of you are interested in that training, and if you would, if you're going to be able to attend, and we can count you in as part of the five seats here. So is it, everybody's going to be like, one, two, three?
I have to see my calendar, but yes.
Okay. Commissioner Rodriguez? Pardon me?
I'll be honest with you.
Oh, lucky you. Okay.
I attended two years ago, and I don't think I should need to attend now.
Uh, it's totally up to you. He, he does, what he does also is, uh, this time he's going to do legally adequate environmental analysis, because that's what we've kind of asked him to specialize on, but he also goes over the last year, every year of case law, so that's up to you.
Let me check my calendar. If I can make it, I'll get back.
Okay, yeah, let me know. Right now, I have three then. Um, the twenty-ninth, that's going to be from nine to three-thirty. The only thing that I see on your calendar upcoming was an item that was postponed, um, but it's supposed to be brought back to you on December the thirteenth, and that is the amendment of the ordinances to convert the zoning maps from hard copy to GIS. That's been a very, uh, technically challenging project, and so hopefully, it'll be here on the thirteenth. That's when it's scheduled to come before you. Um, and the piece of good news is that our hiring recruitments are finally through, and we're going to start the interview process for, um, some planner one-twos and planner fours, and we are doing a promotion to planner three, so it's good news in the planning department. I know, um, it will be nice to see how we can operate fully staffed. Not sure we've ever done that before, but I'm looking forward to it. Uh, and that's all I have. Anybody have anything?
Commissioner Mahler?
I attended the California County Planning Commissioners Conference in Lake Tahoe. Uh, I have notes, and I haven't had a chance to, to get them printed up, but what I'd like to do is wait till the next meeting and then make a report on the, on the conference and provide you with some of the notes of the speakers that I've heard.
Okay, excellent. Any other commission comments? Commissioner Burkhild?
Just as we, so the thirteenth of December is our next, I'm sorry? Sixth and thirteenth, so.
What do we have on the sixth? I don't have anything on my schedule for the sixth. Okay.
Just-
Yep, so they might have added since this printout.
Just logistics, if we're going to get together and have food, um, maybe we could think about that, and that if we have a single item meeting on the thirteenth, that we adjust our start time and go to lunch, or if we need to be here. I don't know about the rest of the commission, but I was-
How's the thirteenth looking for everybody? Does that look like a date?
Can, can I suggest something?
Yes.
County council is always, has their parties for Christmas the second week of December, and they're always unable to attend the luncheon, so if we could do it earlier, that'd be better probably.
Yes, she understands. See, if we plan it when they have theirs, we don't have to be with them.
That doesn't reflect the views of everyone on the commission.
I don't even think it reflects the views of the quip.
No, it does not.
Either the sixth or the thirteenth is, is our days of-
At this point, it looks okay.
Okay. We'll work that out between now and the next.
Since our, we set the time aside, whatever.
You know.
Six, all right. Six unless otherwise noticed, then, so we can parte with the esquires?
Yes, the sixth unless otherwise noticed.
My only other comment would be, if Kim's going to go to a full staffing, what are you going to do about salary savings?
Hmm, I'm going to actually try to use, uh, the salary for staff, so I'm going to try, I'm going to try any approach for that. And, uh, I'm really looking forward to it. I hear we have a very good recruitment, and, and the panels are, are set up, and the questions are, have been prepared, so we're really looking forward to seeing, um, we have six positions open right now, so that will be a, a huge difference for us right now, so I'm looking forward to it.
Great. Anything else? Will we go to the order? If not, this meeting's closed.